Good evening. I may go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District to order. It is now 6:30 PM and we are Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. We are at the RGC CISD Grua High School Cafeteria. To Mr. Osuna and staff, thank you for hosting and for your hospitality. The purpose is determining whether we have a quorum. I may go ahead and take roll call, Section 1. Diary of Dr. B. Babino.
Present.
Thank you. Elizabeth Velazquez Jr., Johnny Pope IV, Mr. Noe Castillo, Mr. Basilio de Villarreal Jr., Mr. Jay Peña, and myself, present. So we do have a quorum. Section 2, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Castillo, will you assist us with the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Section 3, Approval of Minutes for the public hearing held on April 15th, 2021, and the regular board meeting held on April 15th, 2021.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the public hearing April 15th, 2021, and the regular board meeting April 15th of the year, 2021.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. All this in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign. Motion carries. Section 4, Public Forum. Nobody?
No.
Okay. Section 5, before I call out the recognitions, Mr. Velazquez has, is present now and it is 6:32. Section 5, Recognizations. The first one of the recognitions is Campus and District Teachers of the Year. Dr. Salinas.
Thank you. Mr. Board President, members of the Board, Superintendent Schools, Mr. Aulfo Peña, everyone in attendance here. Before we have, we have a small video celebrating our Campus Teachers of the Year, but before we do so, we'd like to recognize all our teachers, all RGC CISD teachers, for their hard work and dedication, especially during these adverse times. So we can't run no applause for all our teachers. So tonight, Mr. Board President, members of the Board, before we announce our District Teachers of the Year, we have a short video of our Campus Teachers of the Year that was created by our PR department. Thank you, sir.
The thing I like most about teaching is interacting with my students. The thing I love about teaching is empowering students to be lifelong learners.
The thing that I love most about teaching is interacting with my students.
What I love most about teaching is contributing and inspiring minds of my students because they hold the key to the future.
I love seeing the student's face acknowledging that, yes, I have taught him or her the proper way to work a skill safely.
The thing that I like about teaching, or love about teaching, is being the guiding light to all the students that I teach.
The thing I love most about teaching is when I give my students a problem and they're able to solve it. To me, that's just very satisfying.
The reason I went into teaching is because I enjoy my little children, and that's what really motivates me to get up every morning and continue teaching.
I love teaching because I like to see the end result. I like to go to the graduations and see my former students graduate from high school, and that is a big accomplishment for me.
I love that every day I know that I'm making an impact in the lives of our students.
What do I like most about teaching? I enjoy it when my kids come to class every day and they are engaged in learning.
And what I could possibly say that I love the most is the connections that I make with the student. I guess that's mostly what I like, the conversations that we have.
What drives me as a teacher and what I like most about teaching are my students.
Alright, so the thing that I like most about teaching is that I never have a boring day. My students always make every day interesting for me.
What I love most about my job is that I get to impact the kids and the future of my world.
What I love most about teaching is inspiring young minds and helping them grow to their fullest potential.
The thing I like about teaching the most is when that kid has that aha moment.
Congratulations to all Campus Teachers of the Year. Before I announce the District Teachers of the Year, I'd like to thank our committee who assisted us through this process. Not easy, it's not an easy choice. We have wonderful teachers and not easy making that decision. And our committee was composed of two retired educators and one district employee. So thank you to Mr. Alfredo Garcia, Ms. Olga Smedley, and Ms. Candace Garza. Thank you all for your help. And also to my staff at the Office of Human Resources, thank you very much. Could not have done this without you. I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you very much. Mr. Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Aulfo Peña, Superintendent Schools, it is an honor to name the Elementary District Teacher of the Year for 2021-2022, Ms. Dana Trialles, Alberto Celia Barrera Elementary. The Rio Grande City CISD Secondary District Teacher of the Year for 2021-2022, Ms. Belza Cantú, Ringo Middle School.
Congratulations again. Up next, Rio Grande City High School District Championships, RGC High School Girls Wrestling, Track, and Field Team. Mr. Ray Ramirez.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Peña Superintendent. I give you great pleasure again to stand before you to recognize two more teams that have excelled in sports this year. Both Rio Grande City and Grua High School represented here today. First up, we're going to recognize the Boys and Girls Wrestling Team from Rio Grande City. The girls ended up winning their district championship, and the boys ended up a close second. They had multiple regional qualifiers and state qualifiers. So at this time, I'd like to again congratulate them and ask Coach Pratt and staff to come to the front to recognize our athletes.
Good evening, everyone. Good afternoon. Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Peña. Like Coach Ramirez said, it once again, it enlightens us and it gratifies us that we present to you another district championship. I will speak for Coach Pratt. Coach Pratt wasn't able to be here with us, but he works hard with these young people, and you can tell. Every year, it's a very successful program. This year, District Championship for the young ladies, and we did bring also a young man that qualified for state and competed in state and placed sixth place in the state competition, so we're very proud of them. Of course, the boys' team came in second place. We expect nothing but great results next year. We present to you Ms. Noelia Alanis as she will recognize our athletes. Again, once again, congratulations to all you athletes.
I would like to congratulate Elizabeth González for being the district champion, a regional finalist, and a state top eight. Valia Canales for district runner-up and a regional qualifier. Emma Benavides for district champion and regional fifth place. Vivian Canales for regional fifth place. Jennifer López for regional qualifier. Natalie García for being a district champion and a regional qualifier. Leah Gutierrez for being a regional fourth place and a state alternate. Triana Castillo for being district runner-up and a regional qualifier. And then I would like to also congratulate Lilian Canales also for being part of the wrestling team. Our team also received district championship, region 5A.
And on the boys' team, we have René Treviño for being a district champion, regional champion, and all-state sixth place.
Thank you, Ms. Alanis. I think you need to be up there in place. Again, we'd like to thank all you young athletes for doing an awesome job, and again, we have to appreciate the parents for being so supportive, because there are countless hours that they commit to their children, to bring them in very, very early in the morning. And this year was an exceptional year because we had to relocate our wrestling mats to a different location here at Fort Ringo. So we thank all our coaches. We thank Coach Pratt for understanding that commitment to our community to get, to ensure that all those vaccines that ran through our high school, ran through our gyms, were provided, and because of that, we are a healthier community and we're ready for next year. So congratulations, one big round of applause for our ladies wrestling district championship team.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I think Coach Pratt is online with us. Would you like to say a few words?
Hey, Coach.
I'm here, but thank you for the recognition for the kids. I don't know if I heard René's name mentioned as being a regional champion and all-state recipient, but you know, the kids bust their tails every morning, and we thank everybody for the support.
Next up, we have our boys' track and field team. Again, I'd like to congratulate all our boys and our coaches. It's been a very challenging year, like Mr. Peña mentioned earlier with the pandemic and having to follow all those procedures and protocols and bus rides and whatnot. But again, thank you to the board and to all the families who allowed our athletes to compete this year and have a season, especially to our seniors. So again, at this time, I'd like to invite Coach Bermúdez to come up and introduce his boys. Coach Bermúdez.
First and foremost, thank you all for having us and recognizing our kids. We really appreciate the opportunity to giving our kids all the recognition they deserve, okay?
Thank you.
To begin, we will announce our team members. Christian Barrera. Dante Barrera. Rolando Beltrán. Alex Canales. Alex Canales was actually our district champ in the 3200 and 1600 meter run. Juan Cantú. Victor Cardenas. Victor placed second in the 100-meter dash. He placed fifth in the triple jump, and he was part of our 4x1 and our 4x2 relay. Michael Chapa. Michael Chapa was our district champ in the pole vault. Miguel Carrion. Ricky Falcon. Ricky Falcon was the district champ in the long jump. He was a member of the 4x1 meter relay and the 4x2 meter relay. They both won district as well. Elie Azar García. Elie Azar was a member of the 4x1 relay, which won district, as I already mentioned. Kevin Rodríguez. Kevin Rodríguez was our district champion in the 110 hurdles. He was third place in the 300-meter hurdles, and he also was part of the 4x2 meter relay, which won district. Third in triple jump as well, sorry, Kev. Leo García. Leo García was part of both relays, which won district, and a vital member of a 200-meter too. A.J. González. Paul González. Luis Inojosa. Luis Inojosa was one of our pole vaulters. René Treviño. René Treviño was recognized in wrestling, but he was also a part of the track team. He placed fourth in pole vault at the district meet and qualified to area. Ricky Villarreal. Mark Pérez. Mark Pérez came in second place in the long jump, was the district champ in the 100-meter run, yeah, run, I'm sorry, dash, I'm sorry, was also part of the 4x1 100-meter relay and 4x2 100-meter relay, which both won district. Enrique Rodríguez. And in addition to our boys, we also brought along with us one of our female athletes, which qualified for state, which was a great accomplishment. She ended up placing top six at the state meet in both shot put and discus, which is a great accomplishment. She's top six in the state of Texas, which is, very few people can say that, obviously. So Serena Ramirez, congratulations. And forgive me for leaving this for last, guys, but I would also like to thank our coaching staff. They are the ones that put in all the hours in an attempt to make these kids better at what they do. Without them, none of this would be possible, obviously. I would like to start with Joe Ramirez, which is one of our distance coaches here at the Rio Grande City High School. I have Mr. Luis González, which is our discus coach. He coaches both boys and girls, okay? I have Mr. Victor González, which is also one of our throwing coaches. He coaches shot put. He also coaches boys and girls. We have Mr. Eduardo Villarreal, which is one of our jumping coaches. He assists us with high jump at the varsity level here at Rio Grande City High School. And of course, we have Mr. Andrés López, which is our girls' head track coach. He's in charge of Serena, obviously, and heads our girls' program. We all work together most of the year, so our staffs are really intermingled, guys. We appreciate you all for your time, and again, thank you for recognizing our kids. Thank you. Our boys' head coach, Mr. Eladio Bermúdez. Thank you, Mr. Bermúdez. Thank you, coaches. Again, we'd like to thank all our parents for sacrificing the time and the effort that they put to support our students and our campus. We intermingle the boys and the girls in track, because if you notice, we do have coaches that help out with the boys and the girls, and when they go out there to the track meets, most of the times, and not all the times, it's a track meet that attracts both male and female athletes, and they help each other, encourage each other. So congratulations to our female track team also. Mr. López. Andrew López. You want to come down and just give us a little rundown of our girls' track team? I know that we didn't bring them here. We're dedicating the time to our district championships and our state qualifiers, but give us a little bit of information on our girls' track team, because they did awesome this year, too.
Our girls were able to place second in the district with a total of 151 points. We went up to the area meet, placed sixth in the area. Of course, we had two advance to regionals in Serena Ramirez and Joslyn Rodríguez. And Serena, of course, again, she was able to get to the state championship, which was this past weekend, where she placed sixth in the discus and fourth in the shot put. Once again, again, like Coach Ramirez said, she's top four in the state in 5A, top six overall in the state, so she did a very good job this year. We're very proud of her and all her accomplishments, and all the accomplishments all our student athletes had. Boys, congratulations once again on your district championship, and the girls, and everybody did a pretty awesome season.
We had a lot of district championships, and we had a lot of second places. So we're there, we challenge the young people to step it up next year and commit to excellence as this group has shown everyone. So thank you again, everyone, and thank you, Board, for allowing us to recognize our athletes. Mr. Peña, we appreciate that. Thank you.
A side note, Serena's only a sophomore, so we expect to see her open state for the next two years. So again, congratulations again. Next up, we'd like to introduce and congratulate also our Grua High School Boys Golf Team. Our boys ended up second team at district and advanced to regionals for the first time in school history. We also had a individual district champion as well, also the first time in school history. So at this time, I'd like to bring up Coach Navarro and his team to be recognized. Coach Navarro.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent Schools. I have a little something for these kids. My name is José Ángel Navarro Jr., head golf coach at Grua High School, along with my assistant coach Hector Gutierrez Jr., who's here with us. We'd like to thank you for having us. On behalf of Mr. Osuna, acting principal of Grua High School, and the entire Grua High School staff, I would like to recognize the Grua Gators Boys Golf Team. So we have, first, we have Salvador Solís. He's a senior. Unfortunately, one of our juniors, Isaac García, fell sick, so he's at the doctor's office, but he'll still get recognized today. We have junior Emmanuel Jones. Our co-captain Jaime Villarreal, who also placed fifth in district play, so that was a great accomplishment as well. He also shot our best score in the regionals tournament on his second round, and overall, as far as our team goes, he shot our best score. So congratulations for that, Jaime. And we have our district champion. He's not able to go, be here with us as well. He's at a doctor's office as well. He's on his way back, but he is joining us through Zoom, Andy Hernández Jr., our district champion. And that forms part of our team. We also do have a bit of appreciation, a token of appreciation for each and every one of you, so we'll go ahead and hand that out. Also, before I forget, I do want to thank Coach Hector Gutierrez, my assistant coach, which has been instrumental through our success. And I do, I do want to add just a little bit to this boys, because they went through a lot this year. This group of individuals has surpassed the highest of expectations from day one. From day one, we set our individual and team goals. From day one, we set our individual and team goals. Having a no excuses mentality was important to their success. Their team chemistry was also exemplary and important factor that allowed them to grow and improve together. In doing so, they made history by becoming the first Gruya Gators Boys Golf Team to qualify for regional play. This team placed second in the Lyford Invitational Tournament, the Westlaco Pike Invitational, Hidalgo Invitational, the Riondo Prest District Tournament, and the Thirty-two for Eight District Tournament. They also had multiple individual accolades along the way. I want everyone to know that this is only the beginning for this group. We have set our goals even higher for next year and now have the experience and the knowledge of what it will take to get there. With continued hard work and dedication, this group has the potential, the ability to win district and advance to state next year. So stay tuned. The best is yet to come from your Gruya Gators Golf Team. Thank you all.
Just a few words. Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent. Now, first of all, I would like to thank all of the parents for their support, continued support as the season went on. You know, it's a lot of dedication from our boys. They put in a lot of practice after school. As a matter of fact, I would go down to the driving rain sometimes and I would see him actually hitting the balls and I wish I could hit as straight as they do. But congratulations, congratulations to all of you, so you know, thank you.
We'll proceed to Section Six, Reports and Information. Item One, Report on Declaring May First as Principal's Day. Mrs. Morris?
Board President, Members of the Board, Mr. Peña, Audience. On behalf of the school board and Mr. Peña and the rest of the administration, we'd like to recognize May First as National Principal Day and I think it was over the weekend, so this was the most appropriate time. This year, our principals have been tested beyond, I think, what any human has been tested with regards to COVID and having to operate during a pandemic. But I can honestly say, working alongside these wonderful individuals, I get to call my colleagues and also my friends, I can honestly say that everyone made every decision based with their heart and of course, with the best interest of our students in mind. And it's a privilege and honor to be able to work with them daily, interacting with them. And on behalf of the school district, I would like to recognize every single one of them. As I call your name, please come forward and proceed this way. I think Ms. Benitez wants you guys to go this way so it'll go faster. Mr. Peña, I said I had two minutes, but we'll try to speed it up, Mr. Peña. Ringo Elementary, Ms. Idani Salinas. From AC2E, Mr. Pedro Omar Peña. From Roque Guerra, Laura Barrera. From General Ricardo Sanchez, Ms. Teresa Ariasola. From Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary, Ms. Nora Rivera. From JNO Inojosa Elementary, Ms. Tonya Surita. From Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary, Mr. Danny Ramirez. From La Unión Elementary, Ms. Lorena Trevino. From Alto Bonito Elementary, Mrs. Yvette Peña. And from Gruya Elementary, Telma Martinez. From the Middle School, from AC2E, Ms. Lillian Jones. From Ringo Middle School, our favorite, Mr. Ricardo Sines. He's the entertainer of the group. He's our mentor. Right, Mr. Sines? But he's not the oldest. Nope. Veterans Middle School, Mr. Henry Cantú. Gruya Middle School, Mr. Rene Peña. From Rio Grande City High School, Mr. Jorge Peña. From Gruya High School, Mr. Ariel Osuna. From Early College High School, Ms. Lisa Gorena. And from the Alternative Center, Ms. Teresa Garza. We have a short video, so we'll play it while we're taking the picture because I think my two minutes are up. It's going to be a really nice picture, Mr. Sines. We're going to get you a copy. A copy of the picture. Thank you, principals. And we celebrated them earlier, earlier last week. Mr. Peña had a luncheon for them and we had some bonding activities with the principals. And Mr. Peña gave some really fabulous prizes, so we did celebrate our principals last week.
They haven't shown the video, right?
Oh, the video.
Thank you for keeping us safe. At a time of uncertainty, we're certain you care. We know you have been asked to do things that have never been done before.
Thank you for keeping us connected and engaged.
Even though some of us are learning from home, you make us feel like we're in this together.
Thank you for answering our questions.
Your patience is amazing and you're always making things better.
Thank you for being there when we need you most. You're putting soul into actions. Thank you for always making time for us.
Gracias por hacernos reír. Sus sonrisas contagiosas los alegra el día.
Thank you for giving us so much of yourself.
You make this feel like we're your top priorities.
We cannot do this without your guidance and support.
Thank you for loving us as much as we love you.
A true leader cannot be defined by one word, instead by a multiple of words that can serve to define what our district principals are. They are the bosses, the leaders, the captains, superiors, above all, the ones who care for their staff. On behalf of the School Board of Trustees and myself, Superintendent of Schools, we want to acknowledge the responsibility our principals have undertaken and have made their own. We know our campuses are in sensational hands and that our students are well taken care of with you at the helm. You are the definition of a true leader and we could not move more thankful for the way you exemplify the leadership, the spirit we have here at RGCC ISD. Once again, thank you and may you continue to guide your schools faithfully and to the best of your abilities.
Item number two, Report on 2021 through 2023 Title One ESF Focus Support Grant.
Since we're on a time constraint, we're going to have Ms. Rita Garza. She is our Director for School Improvement and she's been working very closely with the Curriculum Department to try to see if we can get these possible grants, so I just want her to explain to you where we are with the process, what are the things that we have in place. And we'll be turning in our next grant tomorrow, so Ms. Garza?
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Good evening, Board Members, Mr. President, Superintendent Mr. Peña, and all attendees. Like Ms. Morris said, we have been presented, and if you do not mind, I'm going to go ahead and combine both of those grants which are item two and three, the Effective Schools Framework and of course, the School Action Fund Grant. Now, I'm going to go ahead and take this off. The district has been presented with two great opportunities that some of our campuses have been, or they qualify for, they're eligible for. And of course, that is the first one, the Effective Schools Framework Grant. Now, that one we have already submitted and when I say "we," a grant is not one of the easiest things to write. So a group of us ladies came together and we put all our efforts in to write these grants. I want to thank Ms. Elsa Morris, Ermelinda Ayala, and Ms. Virginia Gonzalez. So with this very first grant, now we're looking at qualifying for anywhere from ninety-nine thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand. This is a two-year grant. There were five campuses that were eligible for this grant, one of them being Gruya Elementary or three middle schools and Rio Grande City High School. Now, the second grant is the School Action Fund Grant. That's the one that we're in the process of submitting. We should be submitting that one by tomorrow. Now, that one brings in a lot of more money. Now, with a lot of more money for these specific campuses, of course, it means a lot of more opportunities for our students and we're very excited about that. One of the campuses being Gruya Elementary and because of the feeder pattern, the other campus that was eligible is Gruya Middle School. Now, if we are selected for this, the very first year would be the planning phase for both of these campuses. And with that planning phase comes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we would use specifically for each campus. Now, each campus would be receiving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, if we meet all requirements within that first year, we will be eligible to apply for the implementation grant. And that means anywhere from five hundred thousand to one million per campus for the next two years. So you can only imagine what we could do with those two campuses. We are excited. We think that we did a phenomenal job writing these grants. Now, it's going to be, of course, up to TEA to decide whether we will be awarded those. We should find out sometime late July, early August. Thank you.
Item number four, Report on RGV Focus Dell Devices. Ms. Ayala?
Good evening, Board President, Members of the Board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent. Again, I'm here right before you with exciting news and we're very happy. RGV Focus, they collaborate with Educate Texas and Community Foundations of Texas. And what they did is they reached out to us and they said, okay, we have these devices that we can give out to different, to the schools. So when Ms. Morris and I looked at this information, we're like, okay, well, we're kind of modest. And we said, okay, you know what, maybe about eighty devices, that's fine. We didn't know exactly what they were going to be awarding us. Then we got notified by them that they were going to go ahead and give our school district two hundred devices, Dell two-in-one Chromebooks. And what they did is by giving us that opportunity, we reached out to all our campus principals and we said, go ahead and reach out to some of your families or your kiddos that might need this device. It's a device that's directly given to them. Dell went ahead and donated these items to RGV Focus and then in turn, since we had two hundred items, we went ahead and did a deployment on May the fifth. We had one here at Gruya High School for our east side campuses at one thirty and then we had another deployment that same day at five thirty at Fort Ringo. We had a hundred and thirty-four devices given out. You should have seen the expressions on some of our families and our kids because these devices were automatically given to them. It belongs to them. It belongs, it's their property. We still have sixty-six more devices to give out. So we're looking at sometime next week to go ahead and give out those devices to our families. And we'd like to welcome you to join us on this deployment so that you could see all the happy families that are out there as far as receiving these devices. So this is just a great thing that's happening here at RGCC ISD and we're super excited about it. Each device starts off a little over three hundred dollars, so I think it's a great, great, great thing that happened to our kiddos here at our district. Thank you.
Item number five, Report on RGCC ISD First Google Academy Cohort.
Good afternoon, Board President, Mr. Eddie Ramirez, Members of the Board, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., and staff and community members present. My name is Ms. Juanita Olivares and I'm the Instructional Technology Coordinator. And the COVID pandemic has changed the face of education forever. On March eleventh, twenty twenty, the World Health Organization declared it a global pandemic and it forced our teachers to face the most rapid change of perhaps any profession in history. Within a moment's notice, teachers were asked to extend their spring break only to come back to online learning environment that was completely foreign to most. I have to admit that one thing is for sure. RGCC ISD teachers and staff have risen to meet the educational challenges presented by this global crisis. Over eight thousand devices are now in the hands of our students and over two hundred hours of district-wide instructional technology training sessions have been available for our teachers thanks to what started to be just a group of classroom teachers that volunteered. It truly has been a tremendous growth, a year for tremendous growth and an extraordinary time for learning. Today, we are here to recognize our district instructional technology team and the educators from throughout our district that have chosen to take things a bit further and participated in the first Google Academy to become Google Certified. Like our students, they had lessons to learn, activities to practice, and challenges to prepare them for the one hundred and eighty-minute exam that they had to do, they had to do multiple choice, drag and drop, and educational scenarios. I am excited to announce that the following educators have passed and are now Level One Google Certified Educators. We have Ms. Delicia Álvarez from Rio High School. Ms. Cam Alaniz from Veterans Middle School. Alejandro Bassan from Gruya High School. Elizabeth Benavides from JNO Inojosa. Ilda Elisondo from Early College High School. Cynthia García from Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary. Irma García from Gruya Elementary. Lisa García Serna from General Sanchez Elementary. Nancy García from Nancy García from General Sanchez Elementary, Priscilla García from Eighth Elementary, and Jeanette Garza from Ringgold Middle School, Rosantina Hernández from Early College High School, Aisa Inojosa, our Instructional Technology Secretary, Sandores López, Gruya High School, Bridgette Ramirez, Rio Grande City High School, Roque Vera, Rio Grande City High School, Justin Villarreal, Early College High School, Justin Villarreal, I'm sorry, Early College High School, Maria G. Villarreal, Dr. Mario Ramírez Elementary, and Elizabeth Villarreal, La Unión Elementary. I would also like to recognize some other educators that were not able to join us, but they also participated in this first cohort. And this is Ana Lara Alvidre from Eighth Elementary. We had Ana Ramírez from Alberto Encelia Elementary. We had Ashley Mills from Veterans Middle School, Erica Corona from Ringgold Middle School, Jessie de la Cruz from Eighth Middle School, José Guerrero from Early College High School, Judith Rodríguez from General Sanchez Elementary, Linda Chapa from La Unión Elementary, Lorena Adame from Alberto Encelia Elementary, Melinda Garson from Roque Guerra Elementary, Ronald Pratt from Rio High School, and Daniela Reina from Early College High School. Thank you so, so much for taking that extra time to learn something new, to be able to differentiate our lessons and our things in the classroom because it does take a lot of practice, and you did that extra things on your own that you wanted to participate. You took that initiative, and that's a lot. This is just the beginning. We are right now training our migrant department, and we are, our goal for this coming year is to get everyone in the district to be Google Certified and be able to use all of these great tools that are already available and free for the district. So thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Jay Peña, I wanted to say a few things on Item Five.
Yes, and also for Mrs. Olivares, I don't know where, I got horrible, I said here. She raised her hand. Also, I'm surprised you didn't read your own name out. I just wanted to give a shout out and to thank you for your efforts as well for providing a cost-effective vehicle for which to distribute educational materials and with which to teach the students. Google Classroom was a big part of my household. It's something that my wife uses quite a bit. I never knew that Google had all those free tools and resources, and this is a wonderful opportunity to make lemonade by having given all the lemons that we're giving throughout the past year because now this is something that we know we can continue on into the future, but thank you.
All right. Item number six, report on declaring May 7th as Child Nutrition School Lunch Heroes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, Members of the Board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent of Schools, and guests. When we received notice last year that school buildings would not reopen after spring break of 2020, we immediately returned to our offices to begin working on the changes to our traditional serving models. Within a few days, we put together a plan to begin operating meal service with guidelines, flexibilities, and waivers as outlined by USDA and Texas Department of Ag. We called in our frontline staff and managed to pull together a team committed to working during a time of much fear and uncertainty. By the following Monday, we implemented our curbside meal service program. By no means was it perfect. We came across many challenges and had to learn to adapt quickly in order to provide our families with the best service possible. As the weeks passed and the demand increased, we partnered with our Transportation Department and added mobile feeding sites in order to reach more of our students. In all, we have served over 2.3 million meals. This unprecedented year was all about flexibility, persistence, and grit, but above all, teamwork. We could not have managed the meal service without the amazing group of people, including the bus drivers, the bus aides, the police officers, security, that gave so much of themselves. Therefore, it is with much appreciation that we recognize our frontline heroes. At this time, we have our cafeteria managers here representing their campuses, and please come forward to be recognized. Rio Grande City High School, Claudia Garza. She's not here this evening. Gruya High School, Carla Solís. Gruya Middle School, Ilda Medina. Ringgold Middle School. Eighth Middle School. Preparatory for Early College High School, Berta Vela. Emiliana, can you give me a flag? Thank you. Okay, Veterans Middle School, Ana Barrera. Gruya Elementary, Marta Peña. La Unión Elementary, Armenia Contreras. Barrera Elementary, Noelia López. Inojosa Elementary, Carla Garza. Ringgold Elementary, Noelia López. Roque Guerra Junior Elementary, Matilde Lazo. Alto Bonito Elementary, Angelica Salinas. General Sanchez Elementary, Virginia Cantú. Dr. Ramírez Elementary, Armandina Zúniga. And AC 2E Elementary Central Cafeteria, Amelia Álvarez. She couldn't be here with us tonight. I also want to recognize Mr. Juan García from the Transportation Department and his staff. Mr. García, is he here? And from our PD, Chief Garza, I think Mr. Javier García is here today to receive that flag for him. So thank you very much. This is an amazing group of people who never gave up, and we thank you so much for everything that you do. Thank you.
And thank you to you as well, Director Ramirez. I say God bless the food and the hands that prepared them. Thank you all so much.
Item seven, report on Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund III, ESSER III.
Ms. Gina González?
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Board, Mr. Peña, ladies and gentlemen. My task today is to report to you the latest information on the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funding Support, now ESSER III. Just a little bit of a background. We are in the third installment of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. The initial one, the Corona Aid Relief and Economy Security Care Act, ESSER I, was allocated to our district early in September of last year. Then we received notice that we were going to receive additional assistance for connectivity reimbursements for computers and for connectivity and for anything covering the PPE efforts. And we've received part of that money. We're still pending some money. And this last one, the ARP Act, ESSER III, is the latest of the installations under President Biden. These funds are being provided supplemental to all other funding sources to our school system. As ESSER I had its limitations, ESSER II had even deeper limitations. I am very proud to announce that ESSER III does not have those limitations, and I will explain in a minute. Of course, ESSER III is solely responsible for protecting the learning loss and assuring that our students receive that extra instructional aid to catch our students up to par. And it's also to establish all of the funding that we received prior to the ESSER I and ESSER II. So we can go back as far as March 30th of 2020 to reclaim old debt that we had for the district and use ESSER III funds for that. So on the slides, if you look up to the next slide, under ESSER I, our district received $353,833. All of that money went to salaries, okay? And then we received ESSER II, that was called in part Operation Connectivity. Did we lose? I wanted them to see those slides. We're on the second slide with the money amounts, the big green one, that one. So under bulk purchase, we received $81,700. We are still pending $896,149 and change. We're hoping that with the legislature finally makes a decision on, I think I shared with the board about, back in December, that the state had done a little gerrymandering, if you wish. They actually took state funding, they put it into a grant, and they asked us to apply for it. So technically, it was our own money that was in our state allowance, and so the plan is to use that money to replace salaries. Like I mentioned previous, when we had the prime, when workers came back and we used it for prime pay, that's what this money should cover. And then we have the last installment, the $41,883,342 under President Biden, under ESSER III, for a total funding for RGC CISD of $43,215.24 and 41 cents, to be exact.
Ms. Gonzalez, can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
So I know that we were presented a big plastic check that we had $41 million. Let's just let the public know, have we gotten any of that $41 million?
No, sir. We haven't even submitted an application.
So let me ask the same question again because a lot of people are under the preference that we got that $41 million. So have we gotten it or not, ma'am?
No, sir. We have not.
So we have not gotten any of that $41 million?
No, sir. We have not even submitted an application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're still pending funds from ESSER II as well.
That is correct. We're still pending funds.
Which is that $896,149.
Yes, that is correct.
It said a lot of people are under the impression that we have gotten these funds and we've already expended them and spent them and did all these things. The fact of the matter is that even in the ESSER II, we have a lot of money that's coming in that should be reimbursed, that has not come in. And that ESSER III, that $42 million, that plastic check, well, it's still not good, right?
Yeah. You can't cash it at the bank.
You might be getting to this, but I think the other thing that needs to be put out there is that that $41 million is 2/3 of what we're supposed to be getting, correct? I mean, the initial amount is $71 million, but they're going to give us 2/3?
No, sir.
Upon need, no?
No, sir. The total amount for ESSER III is $41 million and change.
They're going to give us $41 million.
We have access, as soon as we submit our application, we have access to 2/3 of that.
Correct.
We are to plan for the entire $41 million. However, we will not receive that. Probably the 2/3 or the last 3, we won't get it till July.
That's what I meant. That's what I was asking.
That is correct.
So you say it's less restrictive. In what manner is it less restrictive, could I ask?
In many ways. And I wanted to share, as I go through the slides, I want to share some allowable uses and some unallowable uses. And you will notice under the unallowable uses, it's very, very little that we cannot use. And so because of the outcry of districts across the state of Texas and of course, all over the United States, that we needed support, a lot of the districts used their money, their school allotments to cover COVID-related issues, and we were not prepared, for example.
Let me ask, like, we have that gentleman that's head of nursing for our district, which I think did a wonderful job in vaccinating the whole entire county. I know we spent a lot of money on a lot of our staff to vaccinate a lot of people, and I congratulate him, and I congratulate all the staff, they did a fantastic job. Can we get reimbursed for those funds?
We can get reimbursed for any supplemental support that we gave our employees. It is not recommended, however, it is allowable to pay salaries, yes, sir. The problem with this is, like, I look at it as a Christmas gift, and it's going to last two years, and we have to expend it by September 30th, 2024. If we do not expend it by then, we do not get to keep it. So we need to spend it. At the end of that term, whatever monies that we put into ESSER grant, we need to be able to sustain. So if we decide as a district to pay for salaries in three years, if we do not have this money, which we will not have it ever after the third year, we will be with a burden of sustaining a salary, a kept salary. So there are many ways that we can help our community, our district, and I'm going to share some of those with you.
Last question I have.
Yes, sir.
I know that Rolando was talking to me a little while ago that we're going to be vaccinating kids from 12 on. It's going to be a daunting task. We have over 10,000 kids. I don't know how many you have over 12. Again, those ESSER funds, let's say you do them on Saturdays or after school, it would cover things of that nature, correct?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, quick question for me. Who's going to be in charge of making sure that we spend these funds responsibly?
There is a committee that's going to be set up, and we have to abide by the regulations that the state has given. TEA has given us a set of boundaries on who can sit on the council. We also are going to open it up to public comment. So we have an obligation to ensure that every person has input in our community, our school system. And then it is up to the committee to ensure that the plan is sound. After that, it is the After that, it is the federal programs department alongside with the business office who will ensure that wherever, whatever we said we were gonna do in our plan, that we execute it. And there will be some random validations by TEA. Every six months, they will be coming and checking to make sure that our plan is being spent accordingly.
So you're saying the community will have input into what we do with these funds, and making sure that we use it legitimately, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. Yes, ma'am.
Amazing, thank you, ma'am.
No problem. So again, the basic, and if you look on the next slide, Mr. Ramirez, the two-third addressing, the two-thirds of this total grant is $27,922.28. So we are, when we set our plan into motion, the first two-thirds are ready for extraction as soon as we get our application in. Then we have to provide the community, and of course, every constituent in our RGCC ISD family, we have to present two plans, and make sure that it is a continuous plan. We, if we take off in one direction, and we decide as a committee that, you know what, we need to spend more money on PPE, or, you know what, it's for facilities, we need to spend some money, some more money on facilities to ensure that our kids are safe, whatever that direction is, we will take that again, and we will submit an amendment to the original plan. Again, funds can be incurred from March 13th, 2020, I misspoke earlier, I said March 30th, March 13th, 2020, and they will end September 30th, 2024. The impact of the COVID pandemic to learning has been grand, even though research typically shows that 2.5 months is lost during summer months, because of the COVID slide that they're calling now, they're estimating an additional 2.3 more months is being lost. And that's still not taking into account the fact that we had so many kids that did not log in. So those, this is, these numbers indicate children who were active. So we still don't have a clear picture of what the true impact was to RGCC ISD. So we're faced with making sure that our children catch up, and that they have significant changes as part of this COVID relief fund. When we talked about potential uses, Mr. Villarreal, we talked about, these are the main components, not limited to this, but these are part of it. Supporting teachers, and we're talking about professional development, we're talking about additional tutors, reducing the class size for teachers, instructional coaching, mental health behaviors, teacher training and programming, summer school, after-school enrichment. We're talking about rigorous instructional material, materials, technology, training, all of those wonderful things, more time. We do have a traditional tutorial program, an extended year, however, we need to make it more impactful because we have a lot of catching up to do. Empowering parents, this is a big, for our families, to ensure that we provide mental health and behavioral supports. People that we can hire are people like at-risk coordinators, additional counseling services, and of course, community partnerships. Other supports, and this is very big to RGCC ISD, we can use the money for facilities, such as ventilation, cleaning, HVAC, specialized instructional spaces. We can continue to grow our devices and infrastructures at the technology department, which is greatly needed to continue that support, and of course, more digital tools for our teachers. And again, it's not limited to this. Someone asked, we had a training this morning, and someone asked, can we purchase school buses? And the answer to that was, yes, we actually can. If it's going to provide children a safe ride home and to and from school, and practice social distancing, then the answer is yes. So it is very, very generous, this particular grant. Like I said, it is not limited to supplanting, which is a big deal in federal grants, this one is not, so pretty excited about that. Unallowable, going back to the unallowable, bonuses, merit pay, or similar expenditures, subsidizing or offsetting executive salaries and benefits of people who are not LEA employees, expenditures related to state and local teacher or facility unions, construction requires prior written approval from TEA, and yes, can we construct buildings? Yes, as long as we get prior approval and that we're meeting the needs of the students. So let's say, for example, we needed more space, that we, you know, now we have to, the social distancing, they reduced it from six feet to three feet, however, that's still going to be an issue on our schools, especially if we come to full capacity. So if that comes up, and we are asked, or it is recommended that we build additional rooms, that is also allowed by the grant, as long as we get prior written approval. PMPs, in the past, PMPs, private nonprofit organizations like Immaculate Conception School, would always be able to participate in any of our grants. PMPs are not participating in this one, and will not be allowed to take from our particular totals. Questions?
I have one question, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
In one of the, in one of the supplements we were given, it says automated bathroom sinks, bottle filling stations, and some other auto kits.
Yes.
We can reimburse ourselves for all this.
All of that.
For example, the bottle, so they don't have to drink out of a fountain.
That's correct.
I guess the sinks are automated, so they don't have to go, so all this, let's say, for example, here, it's $576,000, that we can go back and get our money for that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We also are going to provide a public comment period, like I mentioned, Dr. B., we're going to extend it, remember, this is ongoing, so we're gonna have them email, this is my email, ggonzalez108@rgciscd, and of course, call our office, and we will bring that to the table at the committee every time we meet. Like I said, right now, we're in preliminary talks as far as the district looking at potential distribution of funds, and what that looks like, for example, let's say we're going to divide our funds for, we have to, for sure, for sure, at least 20% has to go for learning loss and mental health, for sure. Everything else is negotiable. So, for example, buildings, construction, buses, all of that fits under the rest of the amount. So we have a lot of flexibility, and we won't know exactly what we're going to decide until the committee actually meets.
So when you say mental health, what exactly are we talking about?
We're talking about supports, not only to our students, and giving them the social, emotional learning, but also to our, their, their parents, their families, and to our teachers and staff. So, well-rounded support, yes, ma'am.
So I guess, Ms. Gonzalez, I just wanna make sure, I mean, this is a pandemic that the community has gone through, and they're looking through to all of us to make sure that we move forward, I guess, together. I just wanna make sure that the community has input, especially these funds have come down to make sure that we move forward, and I just wanna make sure that we assure the public and our parents, as well as our staff, that we're doing it appropriately. So I just wanna make sure that we're on the same page of making sure that we're all doing this together.
Yes, ma'am, and it is required by TEA that we provide that public comment period. At next meeting, at June, it was recommended by our Dr. Salinas that we bring it to the public as a pre, before the school board meeting, again, to introduce it, so we can invite some more people to join in and share with, comment.
Thank you, amazing, I think that the community needs it, it's necessary, and I appreciate you making sure that we are being compliant. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Item number eight, report on Texas Education Agency's TEA Special Education Program On-Site Visit. Mrs. Garcia.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, school board president, board members, Mr. Peña, superintendent of schools, ladies and gentlemen. The Rio Grande CDC ISD Special Education and Dyslexia Programs recently participated in the Texas Education Agency's Differentiated Monitoring and Support Cyclical Review for Cycle Two, Group Three, for the 2020-2021 school year. The TEA's Department of Review and Support is responsible to evaluate these programs at least once within the six-year monitoring cycle to determine compliance with federal and state requirements for students with dyslexia and related disorders, and for students with disabilities. And in addition to that, to assist local education agencies in building a continuous plan of improvement process to improve student outcomes. As part of this cyclical review, all dyslexia program artifacts that were requested by TEA were submitted to them by Friday, April 16th of this year. The final TA report with findings, strengths, and recommendations for the dyslexia program will be sent to our district by or around July 31st, 2021. For the special education program, the cyclical review for our district is comprised of two different sections. The first one, it's the desk review, and the second one is the onsite virtual visit that took place recently. The desk review is going to focus on our program's policy review, self-assessment prioritized areas, which are 23, the 24 student folders that we were asked or required to submit to TEA, and the six selected student sample work in the areas of E-LAR and mathematics, and the stakeholder surveys. For the second part of this cyclical review, which is the TEA onsite virtual visit, this one took place on, from Monday, April 26th through Wednesday, April 28th, which comprised the interviews of different stakeholders related to the six randomly selected students. In this case, we had one general education teacher, one special education teacher, one campus administrator, and the parent for each one of those six selected students who were interviewed, in addition to the special services director, that would be me, and of course, our superintendent of schools, Mr. Peña. I am happy to inform to all of you that the end result of this onsite virtual visit went extremely well for our department. This is just adding to the accolades that Rio Grande CDC ISD is, you know, receiving lately, and that's a great feeling. Through the superintendent's debrief and the exit conference meetings that were held on Wednesday, April 28th, basically, TA gave our school district very high commendations. They praised our district and our department leadership, and confirmed that the district, in this district, that there is a genuine desire for continuous improvement of students' learning. You know, one of the things that TA mentioned over and over again is the fact that, you know, what they saw in Rio Grande CDC ISD is not something that is seen in many other districts throughout the state of Texas. Remember that they're doing this throughout a six-year cycle, so they get to this in many school districts throughout the years, and this is something that has not been seen, you know, throughout very much. They were able to confirm the fact that we are a very data-driven district, that there's a lot of evidence of collaboration amongst the general education teachers and the special education teachers alongside with the campus administrators and central office staff, and that we have a very consistent ARD process in place. In addition to that, one of the best findings that they gave us, and one of the best rewards that we can receive as a department, is the fact that we have a very strong relationship with our parents. They felt that when they interviewed the parents of the six selected students, they were able to perceive that parents actually believe in our school district, that they trust us, and that they have a great working relationship with us. In that same, by that same token, you know, with the recommendations, came along one recommendation in terms of the parents. They want for us to transition that very parent, you know, relationship, or strong relationship that we have with the parent, to make it and convert it into a partnership. They also want for us to offer, you know, mandatory trainings to the general education teachers in, you know, special education-related topics, and follow up on those trainings. And finally, they also want for us to be able to offer our students receiving special services more tangible positive reinforcements versus just positive praise. So, you know, once again, this final TA cyclical review report that we're about to receive will be coming into us, you know, on or around July 31st, and this will include information from both the dyslexia and the special education programs. So we will keep you informed as to the outcome of that. But once again, the special services department is extremely pleased with the outcome of this onsite virtual visit, and we are extremely grateful to all the department and campus staff for all of their support and help throughout the process. We would have not been able to do everything that we're doing as a department without their support and without their help, and obviously, without your help as well, and without the support of Mr. Peña. And, you know, most importantly, we are also very appreciative of our parents, okay? Especially those who were randomly selected to participate in this, you know, virtual interviews with TEA, and that they contributed to the success of this process that we underwent. So once again, thank you for all the support, thank you for all the help that you all give us, and once again, we're very pleased with the outcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, I have a question, so quick question. If, with hearing the information that you presented, obviously, what is our long-term goal? What would we like to see for our school district with this information provided?
Okay, basically, we are gonna follow the recommendations that the Texas Education gave us. In terms of our parents, in talking to our parents, one of the things that we wanna do, we wanna empower parents to receive more trainings and more support, because I feel that as a department, there's a lot more that we can do with them, so we are definitely going to be geared in that direction, making sure that we have more, you know, meetings and trainings where the parents can learn to be able to become true partners in the education of their children. In addition to that, we're also gonna follow the recommendation in terms of the general education teachers, and providing more training in the areas of special education, so that they can be well-versed in what they're supposed to be doing, and in the services that they're supposed to be providing to our students throughout.
Obviously, and I think that if we told some of our parents, we do an okay job. Can you let me know, with this newer information, and coming through what we're coming through, how are we gonna exceed what we've done in the past? What are our plans to be better than we've been before?
Okay, one of the things that we're gonna do, ma'am, we are going to basically begin at the department level, okay? And we're gonna, we're gonna create a committee at the department, in the department level, and then we are going to be inviting stakeholders from the different campuses, so that our special education teachers, as well as a genetic teacher, can come into this committee as well, and they can basically be the ones to disseminate the information to parents. And aside from that, we're gonna do it also through social media, you know, platforms, to make sure that we're informing parents of all the different events that are coming up, and the things that we can do to, you know, empower them to become, you know, better learned when it comes to the education of their children. So that's really our plan right now at this point.
And we expect to exceed anything that we have done before, outperform our past expectations, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. One of the goals that we have, obviously, because of all the laws, the learning laws that we are talking about, we are entering into a new stage of, you know, COVID academic recovery, and that's something that we need to explore, and we need to ensure that we're providing everything that we can to our students, so that they can catch up and make sure that we, they are successful with everything that they do academically.
Thank you, I love your energy, and I'm sure our parents will appreciate that you recognize that we're at a deficit, and they're working, that we're all working to make sure we improve upon that, so thank you, ma'am.
We can always improve the relationship that we have with our parents.
Always, I love your energy, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions?
Ms. Garcia, just one comment, I wanna congratulate you. I know our special ed department in the past has had troubled waters, and congratulations on a good audit. I think the board has all the faith in you that you're gonna be able to make this, the department's gonna shine, but congratulations, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Item number nine, report on recognition of RGCC ISD Nurses Week. Mr. Barra.
Good evening, Board President Ramirez, and members of, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Peña, staff and community members. I wanna recognize, once again, our nurses, we're in school, we're in Nurses Week, it ends tomorrow, and tomorrow's actually School Nurses Day. Once again, I can't stress enough, on behalf of, of course, our board, Mr. Peña, all our staff members, that we are extremely proud of our nurses this year. We continue to help out in many events in our community to make our community safer. You know, we have nurses that stay behind and COVID test our teachers, of course, and we wanna, we wanna promote that sense of safety and peace of mind all over our campuses. We are planning for the future, we want to, once again, everybody speaks of the normalcy, we are planning and preparing for anything that is tasked to us, of course, and I can't stress enough how much I thank our nurses and you all's support for helping us out as well. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. And shout out to you as well, Director Barra, as well for your efforts, thank you so much.
Team effort, thank you for everybody as well. We are planning, once again, for next year as well. We are hoping to get telehealth services, medical services here at our district, okay? This would allow easier access for medical personnel to assess our students. We wanna make sure that our students are as healthy and safe as possible. We understand that in order for you to learn at the highest potential, you have to be healthy, so having access to onsite point-of-care medical services at our nurses' office is extremely important, and we are presenting a little information on that. So we have this telehealth services called Goodside, and they are providing these services to us, and they will link an iPad, and our nurses would quickly assess our students, we would make contact with the medical provider, and we would, once again, care for our students in a medical fashion. Parental consent is needed, this is no cost to the This is no cost to the district whatsoever. The supplies that would be coming to our district from iPads, COVID tests, flu tests, strep throat tests, all these supplies would be given to us, and we would, once again, use them for our students. We want to make it as easy as possible for our students, our families, the parents, our teachers, everybody to have the easiest access to these services. And if they do not have insurance, once again, I believe this company is allowed to figure out some sort of cherry pro bono. You know, they'll ask questions to the parents. The conversations between the financial statuses would be between that company that we're hoping to get and the parents, before, of course, the evaluation and medical diagnosis is given. The overall goal is, once again, increase access to medical care and have our students learning as much as possible, and our staff, you know, teaching and as safe as possible as well. Today, we have a representative from Goodside Health. Her name is Ms. Tracy Spinner. If there's any question that I may have not, any information that I may have missed out, and you feel free to ask a question right now, so I can try to help you out.
Real quickly, Mr. Barrera, there's no cost to the district--
No cost to the district, sir.
And they're going to be providing all kinds of tests and things of that nature at the school.
They do that. They provide the iPads, they provide the trainings, so we would have these trainings when we come back in the beginning of the year, okay? They also provide mental health services, I believe, as stated in the ESSR3. Mental health will be designated like a certain amount, so it is important. So I have spoken to the directors of counseling department and our LPCs, and they understand also the importance of this, of having these services, and we hope to continue in the future. So today is just information and any questions that you may have, so I can get that for you, and in order to proceed.
I think Ms. Spinner is on the line. This is, report's item 10, right, just for the record.
Yes, it is. Report on Goodside Health Telehealth.
And I think, Mrs. Spinner, you available there online?
Yes, good evening, President Ramirez and Mr. Peña, Superintendent. I am here. I'm Tracy Spinner. I'm the executive director with Goodside Health.
I just have a question, Mrs. Spinner, is something that I think is quite a weighty issue, is the situation of mental health for a lot of the students, and parents, and you know, in some cases, staff members, because of everybody being at home throughout the COVID crisis, can you walk us through what, I guess, an assessment would look like, and what your firm would be able to do for our students, parents, and staff members?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the question. So with Goodside Health, what we are able to do is we have options where we can provide a mental health screening. So there is a mental health screening tool that is appropriate for pediatric population, so that would be either the PHQ2 or a PHQ9, depending upon how the child presents, either to the nurse's office or to the counselor's office. And so we're able to conduct that mental health screening to be able to gather some information about perhaps what's going on. And then from there, depending upon the results of that screening, we're able to then, of course, with parental consent, refer that child over to one of our mental health partners for some additional evaluation, to see perhaps if there are some higher-level concerning behaviors, or perhaps something that perhaps may be undiagnosed, anxiety, depression, sometimes these are seen very commonly, especially, you know, after periods of grief, trauma, and what our goal is to really be able to early identify, you know, students, staff, or even family members, where they may have experienced significant amounts of anxiety, fear, grief, trauma, and be able to get them connected to resources appropriately and efficiently and effectively.
And so what are those resources locally that you have that you will be able to refer us to?
Hi, Dr. Babino. Giddy.
Hi! Thank you for being here. And you can imagine, as a local pediatrician, my biggest concern is, of course, these are our babies. We have three local pediatricians, and we're doing our best, of course, to take care of all of our children, and we work very diligently. We have a lack of resources in our area, so we work really hard to make sure that our families are not inconvenienced. And so as an outside source, can you let me know what some of your referral sources are locally? Because you're going to find a lot of our parents have difficulty with transportation and other things, and they want to know that they have a local connection that understands the issues that our community faces specifically. So can you let me know some of our local referral sources, or some of our local entities that you utilize to make sure that our kids are not lost to like a grand scheme or a massive healthcare source referral?
Dr. Babino, great question. Thank you so much for asking.
Thank you so much.
So, yes, so we will work with, once we become a partner when your district, so first, we have a mental health provider that we partner with. I live in the Austin area. We partner with a local mental health provider here, who has worked with other districts across the state of Texas to provide teletherapy-based services. So again, those services would be available at home, on weekends, after hours, after schools are closed, after local businesses, or after local providers, may not have office hours. And so part of our commitment to our partnership and to our communities when we work with school districts is to be partners, even with our pediatric community. So we like to see our pediatricians as partners in our work with school districts and systems, so that we're part of that continuity of care. And so with that, Dr. Babino, we would work with Mr. Barrera and identify, you know, those local resources, also review your current district crisis response protocols, your processes by which, and your current resources that you have in your district. I'm also very fortunate to co-chair the Texas Education Agency House Bill 906 Committee on School-Based Mental Health Services. So very knowledgeable about school mental health and school-based mental health services in the state of Texas, that I can bring that additional knowledge to your district and working in collaboration with Mr. Barrera and your counseling department, to really help to identify that and really close those gaps and those access. I was listening to the presentation earlier on the ESRA funding, and I was messaging with Mr. Barrera that we can help to really expand those dollars and leverage your money even further, that if, as an example, if we can help provide those SEL resources at Tier 1 and Tier 2, that's something that your district won't have to expend those dollars on, that we have a partner that have developed SEL curriculum for school districts in Texas that we're offering through our partnership at no cost. So whereas if we can provide these Tier 1, Tier 2 resources, more of your dollars can help to support that Tier 3 mental health resources, you know, for students who are at that higher level of need. But, Dr. Babino, did I answer your question?
No, you did not. Actually, I was asking for your local resources, because that's really important. When I speak to a patient, and they are asking me, who am I going to send their child, who do I know, who I am sending them to their care for, they really want to know that I have a relationship with whomever I am going to outsource them to. So exactly what resources do you utilize? And I'm actually, I'm very happy to have your assistance, because our community is more important than anything. But our community is very, very specific. They only trust us because we trust the people that we're referring them to. So do you have a list of the people or the entities that you refer out to? I mean, it sounds great. I would love to outsource a lot of our patients in a large quantity, but then you lose the specialness, the intimacy that comes with, I know the doctor that I'm sending you to. I know the person that I'm referring you to. I know the care that you're going to receive, and that's the risk when we utilize a large kind of resource like yourself. So, and you don't have to impart this knowledge to me right now, it's a board meeting, and of course, we need to move on, but I would love to hear who your local referral sources are too, so that I can let my patients know, my parents know, who trust me to--
Absolutely.
--entrust them to others, that if they do utilize your services, that they will be receiving services from someone that we know locally, that we trust locally, that we utilize locally. I mean, that's very important to the patients that I service. And so you don't have to answer that now.
I was going to say--
No, no, honestly, you have, yes, that would be wonderful, and this is a conversation we can have later, and I am very excited, and thank you for your time.
Ma'am, can I ask you--
Thank you, Dr. Babino.
Can I ask you a couple of questions, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Are you, the reason I know is that I've been told that children are now doing a lot of telemedicine. When kids get sick, is that what you would be providing for a district? Let's say a child has a fever, a child has a runny nose, are you going to be providing telemedicine or not?
Yes, sir.
So basically, you would have a professional, through telemedicine, diagnose the child with the assistance of the nurse that we have, and be able to prescribe or whatever needs to happen. So my next question is real simple. If the parent doesn't have money to pay, I know you say the district is not responsible for any of the fees, but let's say a parent can't pay, is that child still going to be seen or not?
Thank you very much for the question. So you are correct. So with parental consent, we're able to assess with the facilitation of your school nurse, children who may come into the health room with symptoms that are appropriate for telehealth. You know, you gave a great example, a fever and a runny nose. And through our consent process, we ask parents for information, such as, do you have insurance, yes or no? And if a parent indicates that they don't have insurance, our virtual experience team will reach out to families and find out more information about their financial status. And as an example, if students who qualify for free reduced lunch, that is one indicator that our company could provide those services, those telehealth services, at no cost to the family. And so students who have Medicaid, they are also treated at no out-of-pocket cost. You know, we file to Medicaid to be reimbursed for the visits, and the same for students who may have private or insurance through their family.
So let me ask you a last question.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Barrera. And I just want to respond to your question, because you asked about fever. Here's the problem. Yes, someone can see you via telehealth with fever, and maybe they think it's a sore throat, or maybe they just think it's a cough, but if that child has meningitis or has a significant infection, how does your team, or how does your company make sure that that child has appropriate follow-up, if it's not just the ear infection or the throat infection that you think it is? And that's the concern, sir, Mr. Barrera. You may not understand the care of kids, but that's the thing that most of us as pediatricians have had to deal with. Yes, it's easy to tell me it's fever over a telehealth visit. I'm not done.
But I have a question.
It's difficult if it's fever over a telehealth, but you need to sometimes see someone to make sure it's not more severe, because these are children, and their lives are something that we don't play with. So I applaud you. It's the same thing that my practice is dealing with. It is a difficult process, but because we have follow-up, we have someone local, if you're not doing better, that you can, you know, go into to make sure that it's not something that we said was simple, that is then complicated, that can be life-risking. I'm glad that you've already addressed these issues, and I'm glad that you've recognized that these are significant potential problems with dealing with kids via telehealth, because this is not a game. You miss something in a child, it's not just something that you miss, you can cause a child's life. So I applaud you for having such a great program or process, and I just want to let you know that my practice is, as I'm sure, as the rest of the practices in this county, because we are really dedicated to our kids are working, with making this an easy process for you. And I would like to say, I don't think that any of the pediatricians in this area have ever turned away a patient for lack of payment, so that is not something that this community is used to having to deal with. But thank you again, Ms. Spinner.
Mr. Pope, you have a question.
Roland, this is a possible option. There's still other options for the children. Medical personnel's still in place.
Yes, so this would be, once again, optional for the parents, so I understand parents are very comfortable with their pediatricians. Of course, they would go to their pediatrician. This is, once again, an option. It is just easier access for whoever would choose to use these services.
Amazing. No, I think this is a great resource, and thank you, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Spinner, for your time.
It's not mandatory. Basically, if somebody goes, my child's sick, I want to take him to Dr. B. They can take him to Dr. B, right? Or my child's sick, but I don't really have a doctor, well, here we have this resource, you know, and things of that nature.
Exactly.
So, last question, do you recommend it, Mr. Barrera?
I do recommend we have some sort of services like this.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And I will say that I too, I think that this is a great service for those, especially as long as, Ms. Spinner, you and your company is really involved with keeping the primary care physicians that care for our children in our district involved, because there are babies first and foremost, and we just want to make sure that we are always involved in their care. But I think this is a great resource for our parents. Anything that keeps our children in school is valuable. I just want to make sure, however, that you understand, our community is very based in knowing the people that care for them. Local treatment is very important, and the people that care for them is also important. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Dr. Babino, thank you so much, and you're absolutely correct. Yes, I was going to say, you're absolutely correct, and part of our role when we come in working with the school district is we get to know the local pediatric community, and on all of our discharge summaries, we're always referring families back to their local PCP, and if they don't have one, we help to connect that care. Again, we want to be part of that continuity of care, and always, always referring families back to their primary care physician for follow-up as well.
And--
Mr. Barrera, I just, I know you do a tremendous job in taking care of the district children and staff. You've already proved it time and time again, and whatever, I think your opinion is very important, and if you recommend it, I think it's a great thing. But I call you Superman, because that's what you've been in the vaccinations. Great job, anyway.
Agreed, Mr. Barrera, and thank you so much. And Ms. Spinner, again, thank you.
Mrs. Spinner, would you want to thank you for your time? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Spinner.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day, ma'am. Bye-bye.
Did you cover item 11?
Next item, last one. We have a school HPV vaccination program that we've been using for the past three years. So HPV is linked to cancers when you're older, especially cervical cancers or other cancers of that nature. We want to try to prevent that, the sooner the better. So they are recommendations to get HPV vaccines. These are all optional, once again, and we encourage and we educate families to talk about this vaccine, and you're encouraged to get it. We want to prevent any type of cancer, especially if it's linked to, once again, HPV, so cervical cancers, cancers of the throat, all other sorts of cancers as well, have been linked to, once again, HPV, and we would like to offer these vaccines at our campuses, the way we have in the past. So we've been doing them already for three years, okay? From VMS, we started at 20% of the kids that had vaccines, it went up to 58% fully vaccinated, and grew at middle school, they went from 37 to 47, and RMS from 36 to 43. VMS had the most jump, because we did that campus for two years compared to one year in the other campuses, and we hope to continue these. This program that we're using as well, they offer the free vaccines that are state mandated for the kids to be in school for free as well for the parents. So this was a great benefit to our staff members that had children that needed vaccines to stay up to date. They would just take them to our local middle school that we had a program going, and, you know, it was helping our students, our staff, our families, any community member, any RGCCISD family that was needed, and we're going to continue that with your permission, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera.
Thank you so much.
Item 12, report on superintendent's golf tournament scholarship. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you again, Mr. Board President, Mr. Ramirez, members of the board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent, members of the audience. I want to report on our 15th annual RGCCISD Superintendent's Golf Classic, and really, again, you're kind of hearing everybody come up here and say, you know, the times we're going through, COVID, the pandemic. And when I talked to Mr. Peña about this year's golf tournament, as we were not able to have a golf tournament the previous year, it looked there for a while like it was going to be canceled again. Again, COVID, pandemic. As most of us here that have worked with Mr. Peña know about him, is he's very persistent, he doesn't take no too often, and in talking to him, it looked like we were going to move on from the tournament this year, then he gives me a call one day, a few days later, and says, you know what, Mr. Lopez, let's look into Topgolf. Of course, I'm thinking, okay, he's not much of a golfer, where's Mr. Peña coming with this? You know, those of us that golf, you know, no disrespect to Topgolf, but we like to be out on the golf course. We look to go out to a golf course, and again, we could not have large gatherings, we could not have our dinner together, we could not have our prizes, raffles together. Everybody was basically on their own, play your 18 holes, turn in your scorecard, and you have to leave the premises. So again, pretty much everything that, you know, what we pride ourselves with our superintendent golf tournament. So we start looking into Topgolf, and again, we go and meet with them. They've never had an event with a large group like we were planning, so it was a first for us, a first for them. So we-- So we, we get the process going and where I have to give Mr. Peña a lot of credit is I've been running the golf tournament for maybe six years, five, six, seven years. Never have I had a superintendent that is part, I was the chair of the committee, but I've never had a superintendent be at every single committee. He was not leading the committee, he was part of the committee. When we were out there looking, you know, to see what vendors we were going to communicate with, again, for our scholarships for our seniors, Mr. Peña was out there amongst us. So that made my job as a chair a lot easier, knowing well that I have the superintendent of schools at every single committee amongst us. It just made it that much easier for everybody else to do their part. And again, Mr. Peña will be the first one to tell you, we had great committee members, you know, the, the people there at Topgolf did a great job, again, for being really their first, you know, their first event of this capacity, you know. So again, we had a very successful tournament. Then I'm at home and I can't remember, a board member asked Mr. Peña, what is your goal in terms of collecting money? And I think I'm having dinner at the time and he mentions $125,000. I start choking on my dinner as he mentions that number again, thinking of COVID, the pandemic, Topgolf, I'm thinking, oh my God, what is he doing? You know, so not only, as you can see there in front of you, and I will read out the numbers here in a minute, not only did we reach the goal that Mr. Peña had for the seniors of our district, we by far surpassed them. When we got over the $125,000, I kind of said, you know what? I told some of the committee members, okay, I can focus now on how we're going to run it there at Topgolf. What does Mr. Peña do? A few days later, calls me, out 9:30, 10:00 at night, Mr. Lopez, I found out what the record is for the most money ever collected, so now we have a new goal. So again, I have to give credit where credit is due. It was a whole team of us, but again, I have to give credit to our leader. You know, that again, always setting goals. We got to that goal, he set a new goal. I think we ran out of time. We started late and we did not get to that goal of, of what the record was, but I think we missed it by a few thousand. So what does Mr. Peña tell me after the event? Mr. Lopez, we're going to start a lot earlier next year and we're going to take the record next year. So again, I want to thank the committee, I want to thank Topgolf, again, Mr. Peña. I will go over the, the things here real quick for those of us in the, in the audience and, and our members here that don't have the paper in front of them. Again, the date, the date of the tournament was April 12. It was at Topgolf. Our goal was 125,000. We raised 143,500. Our expenses were 18,180. And what we're looking at there with the expenses is the venue, the prizes, you know, we gave out tumblers, so that was part of the expense. We saved about 10,000 from previous years where we would have the event at the Cimarron. So we averaged about between 27,000 to 29,000, the years that we had it at Cimarron. So again, those savings went to, again, the bottom line. So total money that we're looking at is 123,446 after you deduct, you know, the expenses. We gave out, we gave out 84,750 in scholarships to our seniors in the amount of $750 to 113 seniors. So some of the comments that we got, we got so many compliments. We packed it up, we had no bays available, it worked out just to perfection. We had a capacity of 48 teams that we could accommodate and we ended up with 48 teams. We had so many compliments from our vendors. They were happy to see board members, administration that were accessible to them. We go to a regular golf course, everybody kind of disappears for six hours playing their 18 holes. Here, we took over the whole third floor, so everybody was able to mingle and interact with, with administration, with board, us, with our vendors, you know, with our community members. So again, it turned out to be a great event. I know that most of our vendors and participants are hoping we have it at Topgolf again next year. So again, we, we just, we got a lot of great feedback. As you can see, some of the comments, you know, that they liked is that anyone can participate, not just your golfers. It was a very comfortable environment and 100% of the participants that we surveyed after the event are planning to participate in next year's annual golf tournament. So again, we had top three places and we added, you know, a last place team, you know, for this event. It was something very fun and I want to acknowledge our first place team, a local team that have won for the second time, you know, that, and I'll say second time since I've been running the event. So I just want to shout out to our first place team, Coach Navarro, Orlando Velazquez, and Rio. So again, great job to them. And I, and I'm going to be honest with you, I kind of remembered them because I saw some of them here and then they were one of our local teams. So I'm happy to say that two-time champs. And then I see Mr. Ray Ramirez over here and he, he holds the honor of being on the last place team. So I have to acknowledge Mr. Fred Lopez, our fire chief, Muñoz, and our All-American Athletic Director, Mr. Ray Ramirez. For, he's not used to hearing last place too often. So Mr. Ray Ramirez said, I got to make sure I, all he knows is first, first, first. So during his years of, of, you know, being an athlete, so I said, you know what, I got to make sure I mention Ray Ramirez last place. So again, I want to thank, you know, all the members, everybody. And then we had people that were not on the committee that played such a vital role in getting us, you know, to that point. I want to thank, know we, I saw so many people from the city of Rio Grande, you know, so it was just great to see so many people, you know, coming together, you know, for the greater good, that being our seniors. So any questions?
Mr. Marine, Lopez, I just would like to make a couple of comments. They said it couldn't be done. Well, you and your staff and all your committee members did something that people thought were impossible to be able to do it during COVID, to go and raise $143,500 to provide 113 scholarships for us, $750. Sir, you're Superman two, sir. That's Superman one, you're Superman two.
Okay. Thank you.
Amazing. Mr. Lopez, quick question. Thank you. And, and Mr. Villarreal, he is appropriately correct. This was difficult. So you're saying 100% of proceeds went to our students?
Okay, Dr. B, well, we had, we had 113 students that qualified for the, for the scholarship. So we have, and again, I don't, I don't have the math in front of me, but we have about 15,000 to 20,000 that is going to stay in that account for next year. And the reason, what we're hoping for and we're planning ahead for as a committee is that we're going to have more students next year be at our campuses. So we're expecting a lot more than 113 seniors to qualify for this scholarship. So what we're thinking ahead on is we want to try and stay with that $750 amount because in previous years, and was it 500? I think in previous years, Dr. B, we would give 500. So we did have less students this year that, that applied and qualified for it. So we bumped up the dollar amount, but we're hoping, again, our goal, one of our goals for next year is to try and keep it at that dollar amount. But we are expecting a lot more students to qualify next year.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Lopez, also, there was a lot of prizes and gifts and all that donated, you know, and I think whoever donated deserves also a round of applause because there was a lot of.
And Mr. Ramirez, again, I could, I could be up here praising so many, I mean, the, the city of Rio Grande, you know, donated, you know, multiple things. I mean, members here up there, you know, that I'm seeing at donated many things, a lot of our vendors, you know, so it, we broke records with, with the raffle tickets that we sold. We got to the point that we ran out of tickets and we had to go buy more tickets. And, and when I say, you know, besides the committee, you know, I, Ms. Elsa Morris's department, and I'm talking about secretaries, you know, other people from the, from her department that were not part of the committee, I mean, we were having to work through the weekend straight because of the prizes that we had and then selling of the, of the raffle tickets and then, you know, conducting the, the raffle prizes there at the event. So it was, again, it was just so many people involved that, that get credit for this.
It was so good that I think Mission ISD or one of those tried to do the same thing, I think.
And actually, and actually, Mr. Ramirez, I have, am getting calls from school districts and from Topgolf just thanking us for, for getting them out there on the map in, in regards to other school districts that are going to plan next year's, their next year's scholarship there at the, at that venue.
Mr. Lopez, last question. Who got last place again?
Our All-American AD, sir, Mr. Ray Ramirez. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't think there's anything on item 13, 14, 15, or 16, so we can go to item 17. That's report by Dr. Miguel de los Santos, financial advisor, Estrada and Ojos and Company, timeline and forthcoming activities to actualize the bond sale.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Peña, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to serve you. Secondly, we appreciate very much being a part of the bond that was very successful, so we congratulate you. Before I make any comments, I'd like to introduce Angel Magallanes and Bobby Villarreal. They're both colleagues of mine with Estrada and Ojos and Company. Bobby's been with us for about three years. Angel was with TASB for eight years and just joined our firm about Monday.
Excuse me, sir, I can't hear you. Is there any way we can get you a better microphone?
I apologize.
No, no, no worries, sir. Thank you.
So Bobby and, Bobby and, mask really makes a difference, right?
Amazing, thank you.
Bobby and Angel, I was introducing them, Dr. B. So what I'd like to do though is you have items two and three that are, that following and under consent, on the action items, that are going to be voted on by the board if you choose to move forward with the financing. But before we do that, I'm sure there's a lot of folks that are wondering, you know, what happens next. One of the things that will happen next is, of course, tonight, I'm presenting to you and we're asking in item two or three, that you approve an order authorizing the superintendent and authorizing the board president to work with us and with bond counsel and other members of the finance team to actualize the sale. What, what happens is for the next 30 days, our firm in particular will begin to prepare a document that's called a preliminary official statement. We'll end up with a book about 80, 90, 100 pages that tells everything there is to know about Rio Grande City ISD finances. And the reason that that's necessary is that the folks who are going to invest in you to buy your bonds, to give you the loan, if you will, want to know everything there is to know about the finances of Rio Grande City ISD. So the steps are there. We go through it for about a month and then in about a month's time, we, we monitor the market and, you know, at a time that we feel the market is advantageous to the school district, we communicate with the board president and the superintendent and in effect, in effect, you're authorizing them tonight to pull the trigger when we believe that you're within the parameters that we have set. The, the other two major items that the board would be interested in are highlighted at the bottom, June the 20th, the 30th, I believe, where we have, more or less around June the 30th, depending on how the market is looking, we would price the bonds, which means in essence that we would sell the bonds. After we sell the bonds, in other words, we make a commitment that you're going to borrow that money from certain investors that have offered to buy your bonds. It takes about another 20 or 30 days before we close the bonds. So we're looking at late July, early August, when you would actually get the money in the bank. Now, you don't have to wait. The item number three in the action item is the board approving a reimbursement resolution, which in effect authorizes the board and authorizes the administration to move forward with whatever projects you identify and you can begin to spend money on those projects from your general fund, from your fund balance. And the reimbursement resolution, in effect, what it does is that, once you get the money in the bank, like I said, late July, early August, whatever monies you have spent from the general fund, you would reimburse your general fund from bonds. In other words, you're, you're, you have the ability to begin your projects right now, tomorrow, once you approve the reimbursement resolution. So the timeline is there, about 30 days to price and sell the bonds, another 20, 30 days before you actually get the money. But if you act on it, on the order and on the resolution, you in effect authorize administration to begin moving forward with expenditures, knowing that you're going to be reimbursed. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. De Los Santos.
Yes, sir. No, the last point, I just want to take an opportunity, Mr. Peña's getting all kinds of accolades, but I do want to thank him and his staff. They made it very easy for us to do our work whenever we had information in, trying to prepare the, the information campaign, they were very good to work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. De Los Santos. Right, section seven, recommending approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is item one, two, three, and four as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Castillo. Any discussion? All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Dr. B, I can't see your video, so I don't.
No, sign.
All right. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. B. Action item number one.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we prove item one, two, and three, and four as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to prove items one, two, three, and four. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion? Go ahead with this, pursue with this question, Mr. Castillo.
We could authorize Mr. Peña to, to use the facility that's.
Sorry, sir, I can't hear. I apologize. I, I don't have the microphone.
If we can authorize Mr. Peña to, for these facilities so they could be used, you know, just required if they need them for that distribution or any other one, any other school that would make sense, depending on what, what's going on within the district. You know, I know that they're asking for personnel and maybe a couple of fore clicks for that event. That's my recommendation.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by Mr. Castillo. Any further?
I also have discussion. I would like to hear about item number two.
Item number two.
I would like discussion on item number two. Yes, sir.
That was Mr. De Los Santos.
Please.
Go ahead, Dr. B.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just would like discussion on item number two.
Okay. General discussion?
Item number two is, is what I said, it's order authorizing the parameters to move forward with a bond sale. That was prepared by your bond counsel, and what it does is it sets parameters. It says that you will not, you authorize, first of all, your board president and the superintendent to work with us, monitor the market, pull the trigger on, on selling the bonds. Because one of the things that happens is, if you don't do that, if you say, well, we want to wait until you sell the bonds and then we'll approve the sale, is that it doesn't give you the flexibility to monitor the market. And you, we'll set a date and we'll say, we're going to sell on such and such a date. And whether the market is good or not, once we advertise, we're going to sell. And then that same night, we have to come back to the board and the board has to approve the sale. And you run into the risk of forums and you run into the risk of not getting the board to approve, the interest rate being higher and so on. So what you're approving is allowing the flexibility. In effect, you're approving that the board president and the superintendent can act on our recommendation as we, as we look at the market, and then we will come back to you after the, after that, at your next board meeting and, and report to you what happened. Not for an action item, but as a report. The action item is tonight.
Excuse me, Mr. De Los Santos. So what you're telling me is that basically we're authorizing two individuals? Is that what you're saying?
Well, you're authorizing, you, the board, are making the decision. You're not, you, you're, you're making the decision tonight and saying, you know, with the advice of the super, the financial advisor and bond counsel, looking at the market, if the market is within certain parameters, your parameters are that you cannot sell more than $71,650,000. The transaction has to happen within six months. The interest rate cannot be over 3.5%. If it's within those parameters, then you're, you're saying, you guys can go ahead and take action for us. You're taking action tonight to allow them to take action. You're not out of the picture. You can vote no tonight.
And, and how many districts allow the board president and, as you're stipulating, to make such a magnanimous decision? Is this a typical?
Yes, it is. It's very typical. It was, it happened last night in a number of school districts. It happened, it has happened here many times, when you refund bonds.
Yeah. We know what happens here, sir.
I'm sorry?
But my question is, is, is this something that we feel, especially with our past actions, is something that our district should participate in?
Disregarding the snide comment, just answer the question.
It's our recommendation.
No, it's, it's not a snide comment, Mr. President. The question is, as the people who have contacted me, who are giving up their tax monies, they want to know. There are only two people are deciding where their monies go. This is not snide, this is responsible.
That is not correct.
And I'm not speaking to you, I'm so sorry. I'm speaking, again.
Mr. President, I'm confused as to where we're going with the question.
The fact of the matter is that we're going to use bond counsel, we're going to use your experts, and we're going to give the authorization to the superintendent and the board president, but with your advice, you're the financial guy, so you're going to say, this is a good time to sell and get the best deal.
That's correct.
But it's not something they're going to decide, it's going to be on your recommendation, correct, sir?
That's correct.
So.
Yes.
So here's my thing, I don't think I appreciate a board that says my question is snide because I represent a community of people who are putting up their tax dollars, and they want to know where their tax dollars are going. So if you think that's snide, then maybe you have a problem.
No, I think it was snide, maybe you should try coming to a more board meeting.
But I was elected to represent people who have asked me to come to this meeting to ask this question, so it's not snide.
Well, you finally showed up to one, thank you.
It's just reasonable, and I'm not speaking to you. I'm speaking to Mr. De Los Santos.
No, I'm the president, I can control the beat.
So thank you, Mr. De Los Santos.
Mr. President, I call for the question.
So you're saying this is a typical thing that other, other districts usually participate in, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Very, very common.
For your educated comment.
All right, any further discussion?
I call for the question, Mr. President.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal and a second by Mr. Castillo, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. All those opposed, raise your left. Abstentions, six to one, motion passes. Item number five, consider take possible action, thank you, Mr. De Los Santos.
Before, before we go, one last thing, La Gruga is finally going to get a middle school, they deserved a long, long time ago.
And they did, they deserved it a long, long time ago, agreed. But you were on the board then, and they didn't get it.
Item number five, consider take possible action on amendment to Vega Solar Energy L O C application. There are motion, any discussion on item number five?
I, I, I move that we approve item five, but I'd like a little bit of discussion. I don't know, is there anybody here for that?
Anybody for a discussion on item number five?
I need to know what this is about, but.
Mrs. Diana, Mrs. Robles Mendez?
Good evening.
Who's this?
The company recommended by Owen Howen, they are making an amendment to the application to submit to the controller's office on the chapter 313 application for Vega Solar Energy that was recently approved in one of the past board meetings.
So you're recommending it, Ms. Robles?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I make a motion to approve item five as presented in our board packet.
Is there a second to item number five? Second, Mr. Noe Castillo, any further discussion? All those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion passes. Item number six, consider take possible action on requisitions, $5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve item six, item seven, as presented in our board packet.
Okay, there's a motion, Mr. Villarreal, to approve item number six and number seven. Is there a second to that motion?
Discussion.
Is there a second first?
I have a discussion.
We're, I'm going to go to discussion, ma'am. Is there a second, Mr. Pope?
Perfect.
Did you second that? A second by Mr. Pope, okay, discussion, go ahead, Dr. B.
So we're talking about requisitions, correct?
Yes.
Wait, and I just want to make sure, item number, does this include item number, reports item number 15, or no?
It's item number six and seven.
Okay, now wait, thank you, sir.
All right.
Can, can I also, I don't know if I included it with the addendum that was given to us?
Do you amend your motion?
I want to amend my motion to include the addendum that was given to us.
Okay, so there's an amendment to Mr. Villarreal's motion, is there a second to the entire motion, to the amended motion?
A second, but I also have a discussion on item number seven, bid number 21 through 18, dash 18, 21, dash 19.
Okay, so this is a second, Mr. Pope, and go ahead with your discussion, Mr. Pope.
I just wanted to know.
Apologies, I can't hear, sorry, sirs.
Maybe you can move it closer to your.
It was off?
Yeah.
How about now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, so the vehicles for child nutrition program, vehicle for transportation department, I, I saw that there was, I, I know that there was bids, but was this opened up to paying here in Rio?
This was opened up to pretty much anybody that would like to go ahead and bid on it. We did advertise for it and pretty much promote the bids out there.
Okay, I, I didn't see, I didn't see, they couldn't compete with the price?
They did not submit a bid.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Any further discussion? There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal, a second by Mr. Pope, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Same sign, motion carries. Item number eight, consider take possible action on early notification, resignation, incentive, and replant.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eight as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal, is there a second?
I'll second, subject to discussion.
Second by Mr. Peña, going to proceed with the discussion, Mr. Peña.
Yeah, the only question I have is, I know that there's some folks that may have retired throughout the past year, I just wanted to see if this actually accounts for some of the recent retirements that came up. I think we had like a batch of retirees.
Yes, sir. Mr. Peña, to address your question, if you look on your board passout, beginning on page 242, we do have the, I know that it's a black and white copy, but that highlighted area does highlight the employees who did resign or retired from the district this fiscal year, beginning July 1st. Our first reaction, the administration was not to include these individuals, and we did have a in-depth discussion with our general counsel, and his position is to include these individuals in the ENRI that qualify. There's also one individual who had the 20 consecutive in four and a half years. Again, the first reaction was not, not to allow this, but in discussion with general counsel, there is a TASB rule, which I do have reference to where a half year counts for a full year. So I hope I answered your question there, sir.
Fantastic, so it's retroactive, it's going to cover the folks who, who retired, possibly, let's just say, for example, November, December of last year?
That is correct.
Ms. Salinas, I just want to also make sure that the proper measures were taken, because I know there was an individual that was calling last year, I believe, that she had, that she didn't receive proper notice, and she wanted to make sure that she qualified, and she wanted to open it up. But what was the process and has the deadline already finished for this?
Thank you for the question, sir. So the process was, we, since, I mean, earlier you heard about Google, the Google District, so we did use Google Sheets, Google Drive. However, due to that one situation last fiscal year, we went to the hand-delivered, our campus principals, our departments, had a master sheet where every employee that did qualify had to sign off that they received it. Our employees on ADA, either we called them and emailed them a copy, we just went through every qualifying employee to make sure that they did receive their enrollment notice. Now, obviously, some didn't turn it back in, they're not interested in the program, but we went through those steps to make sure that last year situation did not come back.
Perfect, thank you. And, and so the steps were taken, so we shouldn't be receiving somebody saying, oh, well, I didn't, I didn't know that this was happening. And then also, another question was, this is actually beneficial, this is going to save the district money, correct?
On the page 243 of your handout, sir, you do have four columns, and you see the 40%, you see the actual salaries paid this fiscal year, the people who were enrolled. And on that note, let me just jump to something really important. The next steps, if approved by the board of trustees tonight, the next step is to send the notice to these qualifying, or these individuals on this list, to have them sign a release agreement, and of course, our general counsel has reviewed that. That release agreement releases of several, you know, legal terms that need to be included. And there's a deadline of Friday, May 28th, 2021, that these individuals on these spreadsheet before you have to withdraw from the program, okay? So that's the, that's the date that they have to withdraw from the program. Now, going back to your question earlier, we are going to have also safeguards in place to where we contact these individuals, say, hey, there's two days away, are you sure you're not withdrawing? You know, Friday's the deadline, that kind of thing. So, so going back to your question, on the first column, you do see the total payout, which is $5,284,000. You see the 40% payout of base salary, and of course, that's with the assumption that everyone on the spreadsheet does take the program. The cost to replace, and what we see as a potential saving two years, what we ran on the spreadsheet, is replacing that employee at a zero year in that pay grade. So middle school principal, zero year, your personal experience would make that amount, you subtract those two, after the payout from next, because this money is not budgeted for, we'd have, need a budget amendment for whatever the final total is in June, we'd come back and ask for that, then you subtract those two, and it should give you the potential savings two years from now.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What is, what is the savings more or less, Mr.?
The projected, Mr. Villarreal is 1.7 in two years.
1 for, 1.2 savings, that's after we pay everything else, right?
Yes.
So in other words, we're going to be $2 million in the, in the good after two years, correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion on item eight? There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal, a seconded by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Dr. B? Same sign, motion carries. Item number nine, consider take possible action on 2020, 2021 summer work schedule.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve item nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo, is there any discussion?
I'd like discussion on 12, 13, and 14, please.
Yes, ma'am, go.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Salinas.
Was that item 12, I'm sorry?
12, 13, 14.
12, 13, and 14.
Okay, 13 and 14. Yes, ma'am, Dr. B, on the agreement on 13, this is an MOU that we'd want to enter with Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, University of Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. We do have currently four student teachers that we house in our district. I believe two out of the four are band students, so they come into our district and work their practicums or work the hours that they need for their student teaching at the university. And Texas A&amp;M Kingsville is allowing $200 for a mentor teacher, any, any teacher that would take these students under their wing and, you know, walk them through the process of being, being a teacher and complying with their program qualifications of having their student teaching to their practicum. The two students that we have in the district, both are music teachers, as I mentioned earlier, and they have to receive elementary experience and secondary experience, so that $200 stipend would be broken up into both teachers. It's not much, but we do commend the university for, for doing that.
I'm sorry, sir, did you say these are band teachers?
The, the two, we have four currently from Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, we have several from UTRGV, which is our, probably the number one university that we house the student teacher.
Yes, sir.
However, I believe we do have four right now from Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. Two, I know for a fact, are band majors, I should have said band majors, and they're doing their practicum with our band stu, band teachers in the district, yes.
Got you, okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So, Ms. Salinas, no cost really to a district, it's just an agreement so they can come and work at our district.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So they can do their internship, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And if approved tonight, Mr. Villarreal, we go with the caveat that we go with our operations, business and operations, make sure we have the transaction of monies in the correct manner.
That was for item 12, okay, item 13?
That was 13.
That was 13?
And there was 12 and 14, question?
So they want a discussion on 12 and 14 as well.
Oh, 12. Okay, so item 12 is a similar item to 13, however, UTRGV wanted to formalize the student teacher MOU that we have between the district and UTRGV. It's just in writing, it's something we've done for years, and we're just formalizing the, the university had an initiative to where we put this in writing and make sure we're all on the same page. So it's just the same thing, student practicum, however, there isn't the $200 for the mentor as Texas A&amp;M Kingsville.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And then item 14, Dr. Salinas.
Item 14, we have some HVAC repairs that are attached to, to your board packet, and we're looking at the first two quotes for Ace Elementary, this is a 20-ton unit, and the two quotes that we have is three Gs and Johnson Controls. Mr. Salazar, am I allowed to say the amount? I don't know.
I think you need to say the amount, I'm requesting that you say the amount.
Yes, ma'am. So three Gs came out at $17,800, and Johnson Controls came out at $18,396, so obviously the recommendation here is three Gs for quote 11934. You look at quote 1140, which is Alberto Celia Barrera, which is two, two 10 units, and again, three Gs came out at $19,680. Johnson Controls is at $22,871. And the last set of quotes that we have is for parts and installation, those were brought in by Carrier, the Carrier company, and we're accepting both of their bids or quotes at $1,750 for Ringo Middle School and $1,800, I'm sorry, $1,080 also for Ringo Middle School.
Mr. Salinas, this is a question, and, and I'm only stating this because Mr. Villarreal has been very vocal on his complaints about the amount of monies that we spend on our air conditioning units, even though a lot of the problems that we're facing are 20 years old. What is our end game? Because I see that a lot of our expenditures seem to be on air conditioning, and we tried to bring in a company that would help us ameliorate these expenses, but since that company has been removed, how much are we willing to spend on an issue that seems like it's one of our largest expenditures? What's our end game? What's our plan?
The current plan, Dr. B, in place is, the superintendent directed the assistant superintendent for Student Services, Ms. Cynthia Bassan, to come up with a needs assessment for both roofing and HVAC. I do have that plan, of course, with the permission of Mr. Peña, I can forward it to the board, so you can.
Please, I don't, I don't know if you need permission of Mr. Peña, I mean, it's the board that is going to approve this, and especially since the board has been so vocal about the excessive amounts. about the excessive amount of expenditures, it seems like it continues under the current board's leadership. So I ask, the community wants to know, what is our end plan?
Yes, ma'am.
If the previous plan wasn't approved, is the newer plan better? Because I just see us spending more and more money on issues that are 20 years old.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Salinas. I know we had a company that did air conditioning or energy efficiency and put a bunch of controls and a bunch of air conditioners, which I know for a fact, many of the air conditioners are not working right now. They're about a year and a half or two old. I know for a fact that our maintenance department looks like a nightclub because all the lights are going in and off. And yet, we called the company and they say we're we're not under warranties anymore. So what is what is the plan? I think we need to go and fix these air conditioners, replace them with new air conditioners with a five-year warranty and parts and labor. But
Agreed. Are these the air conditioners that we're talking about that you put under under your leadership, sir? Because most of them are 20 years old. So I agree. This is a problem.
Parts and labor. But we need to understand that if you go and 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 talk to the people, the air conditioners that were installed about two, two and a half years ago, at least a good amount are not working properly right now. And they they do not, what for we, we failed is that we didn't get a five-year warranty for parts and labor. So now they're not working and they're not servicing. So I think as we move forward, we need to get a warranty for five years, parts and labor. So if they get broken, they need to come and fix them. But what you're doing right now is the right thing to do, replacing these big 10 units. So when the kids come back to school, they'll have a cool, if not cold, environment, basically. That's what I have.
Is that how you feel, sir? Is that is that where we are?
Well, there's other things like putting UV lights in in air handlers and things of that nature. We need to, we were given lots of money.
It's called modernizing our schools.
Where we're given lots of money.
Because our newer schools that you built obviously are the ones that are having our major problems, which is a problem because they're new and we don't know why they're happy.
Hold on. Everybody. I'm the president. Last time I checked, and I get to who has the floor and who doesn't. So it's one time. I've given everybody enough time to talk. You all shouldn't be talking over each other. So I think everybody's spoken.
I'm done. I just want to know, are we going to keep spending money on air conditioners that we just bought?
That's not even a discussion.
Can someone answer that? And and I'll be quiet.
All I have to say, we got a lot of money and didn't fix an air conditioner.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal.
Well, he had 20 years and he didn't fix anything. So why are you speaking?
We've had enough discussion.
Can someone just tell me, are we going to have our kids with air conditioners?
Call for the question, Mr. President.
And are we going to still keep a brief delay? Are we going to keep spending money when our kids don't have air conditioners? Because that's what the parents want to know.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, seconded by Mr. Castillo.
I thought we were still in discussion and I haven't finished discussion.
No, it's enough discussion already.
I'm still listening and I still haven't heard information.
All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, 6 to 1, I guess. Motion passes. Item 16, consider and take possible action on request for permission to hire an engineer for paving of Fort Ringo Streets and Joar Sanchez Stadium parking lot pending availability of funds.
Mr. President, I want to make a motion to not necessarily hire an engineer, but go out for proposals, a proposal for engineering to pave our streets and make a possible parking lot at at our stadium or next to our stadium. And this is just for a proposal. This is not to hire anybody.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Mr. Pope. Any discussion on item 16?
Discussion I'm requesting.
All right. Who's on item 16? Who's presenting on item 16?
Well, there, this is just a proposal to try and see.
Oh, just a.
It's part of the bond issue money that we had. The bond issue money you had was to pave all the streets from Fort Ringo.
Can someone give me an oral proposal on the money that we're requesting?
Again, everybody's speaking. Everybody's speaking over each other. Mr. Peña, will you provide some discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Back in December, we formulated a district committee and we identified our district needs. And this is one of the areas that, you know, we identified as a district committee and we presented before. So at this time, I am asking that we come before you just so we could start the planning phase. We do have football season around the corner. Come August, you know, we start with our off-season and we need to make sure that if we can already start working on some of this pre, you know, work, we'd like permission to do so at this time, sir.
Is there any further discussion, questions on items 16?
So my question is, so before we take action, you're going to present numbers. We're going to know exactly to the extent of which you're talking. There's going to be information provided. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. This is just asking for a proposal.
From who? Who are we asking for a proposal from?
For any engineer that wants to bid on paving the street.
I didn't ask you. I'm speaking to Mr. Peña. Mr. Peña, who are we asking for a proposal from? Thank you, sir.
Go ahead and answer, Mr. Peña.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Robles will take over and make sure that we follow the bidding process at that time.
Thank you, sir.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, seconded by Mr. Pope. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 17, consider and take possible action on RGCCISD 2021 graduation guidelines due to COVID-19.
Mr. President, I move we approve items 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion?
I would like discussion on 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25.
All right. Let's go start with item 17.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, item number 17 is a RGCCISD graduation guidelines. We are going to be having in-person graduation for our three high schools. And we are asking the board for permission to host the in-person graduations with the following guidelines. Every student would be allowed four guests. They would be issued color-coded bracelets for their guests. We have also provided a diagram of the way we plan to set up the stage. The stage will be directly under the scoreboard and then we will use the entire field to set up our students and our our graduates. And on the stage, if you look at the second page that has the guidelines, our graduations are going to be on the 25th, the 26th, and the 27th. And if for some reason we have rain delays or something happens, we do have makeup days. And they're not designated for any school. It just has three different makeup days. So let's say we have a graduation on the 25th and then we don't have a rain out, then maybe we have a rain out on the 26th. We know that we have three days to make up any graduation that would have to be canceled due to rain. Since we cannot move the graduation indoors like we normally would, the makeup days would just be after those three designated days. The four bracelets would be given to the students. There would be no exceptions as far as not having a bracelet. Graduation caps may be decorated. Students will wear their cap and gowns. But we're also not allowing students to alter their gowns. There were students that wanted to put decals and flames and just deface the gown. Since the graduation is a formal event, we want to make sure that we keep the event formal. The other thing that the seating would be on a first-come, first-served basis with the exceptions of the 2021 valedictorian and salutatorian. This is something that we've always done, not just because of COVID. We always designate an area of the stadium where the valedictorians' parents and the salutatorians' parents sit, but they would also be four guests per per graduate. The platform guests would be our valedictorian, our salutatorian, and our senior class president. We would have the high school principal. Since STC is not having in-person graduations, STC has reached out to us that they will send either a dean or a representative from STC to confer their graduates who are receiving dual diplomas. They're graduating from STC with their associates, and then they're graduating from Rio Grande City High School, Early College High School, or Gruia High School. The order of the procession, as outlined in our handbook and our and our ranking policy, it'll be the valedictorian, the salutatorian, the senior class president, honor graduates, and then, of course, all of our seniors by alpha. We have there the layout for each campus. I don't know, is there are there any questions from the board members?
I do. What are what are your specific COVID-related restrictions? Because we are still in the midst of a pandemic. So and I get it. And I know you're working very hard, so please don't think I'm not. I just would like to know because people are asking me to. What are our particular protections?
Students will be required, as well as their guests, to wear a mask. We will have designated seating that's already been outlined at the stadium. Parents will sit in pods of four, meaning that there will be socially distanced four guests and then six feet, four guests and six feet. We will be giving passes so that we can control the number of people attending the graduation. And we will be checking temperatures at the entrance. We will also not allow students to or parents to come on the field and have a large gathering. So as soon as the students graduate and they go through the line and we finish commencement, they would all exit the stadium. And we're asking students and parents to report to their parking lot instead of congregating on the on the actual field.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Do we have a number on on students attending?
Yes. If you look at the graduation for, we have 783 graduates. Rio Grande City has about 400 graduates. So we're talking of about, if all of the students attend and their parents, that would be 1,600 guests. At Rio, at Early College High School, they have about 120, 113 graduates. So they would be there four guests. And then, of course, Gruia High School would be 204 guests. And they would be utilizing one side of the stadium, Rio Grande City High School. In order to accommodate those pods of four, we would have to be using both sides of the stadium. So one of the things that we'll be doing this year is we will not be putting chair covers. All the chairs will be sanitized after each graduation, but we will not be changing chair covers. Otherwise, we would have to launder those. We will allow both sides, like I said, for Rio Grande City High School because they do have, you know, twice as many graduates. And that's the reason for setting up the stage in a different manner than we've set it up before. And we took, you know, bits and pieces from what some school districts did last year. I know there was school districts that didn't didn't have drive-bys. They had in-person graduations. And most of the college graduations that have been taking place in the last couple of weekends have been outdoors and they've been in a very similar manner, meaning that they restrict the number of guests. So we're restricting it to four. And we've had questions, whether I have a sibling or a little brother, a little sister, and we're just saying four guests is four guests, whether it's a child or an adult, because the whole issue is the number of people at the event. So.
Ms. Morris, are we going to utilize both sides of the stadium?
Yes, for Rio Grande City High School. And it's an option for Gruia High School. If parents feel that, you know, maybe they want to social distance a little bit more, both sides will be able to be utilized. And that's why we're setting up the the stage the way that we're setting it up.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. This is a cumbersome undertaking and I honestly feel that I know that you'll keep our community safe. So thank you, ma'am.
And the other thing is, even on the platform, we're not having all of the students sit on the platform. And one of the things that we're doing, Central Office Administration, to support, like Dr. Salinas, myself, and some of the other administrators, we're going to be on the actual field trying to help mitigate the crowd and so on. And the only person that'll be on stage, of course, is our our superintendent and the board members so that, you know, we can kind of show the parents, look, we're doing it to keep everybody safe. We're going to be out in the trenches and not on the stage. So that's something that's different for us. Normally, it's the high school administration that takes care of that. But we're going to make ourselves accessible at Central Office to assist with that so that Mr. Peña can, you know, host that with the board members and the three individuals that we spoke about. But everything as far as the program will continue the same. Students will come, speak their part, and then there'll be a designated seat for them on the field as far as honor graduates. And we'll have seating charts and so on. So everyone will be honored. It's just going to look a little different this year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's proceed to item 18.
I guess, I guess instead of reading through it, because that was, I mean, the description was two pages, if we would have looked through item number 17, it would have been clear.
Right.
But on item number 18, I guess the simple questions, discussions is, what's the program do? The cost, it says there $34,183. I mean, it's just, I think it's very time-consuming.
Item item number 18, consider and take possible action on the request for Destiny Resource Manager. What that is, it's a inventory system. Since we have over almost 9,000 laptops, we have about 8,000 devices that we purchased. One of the things that we didn't have in place, aside from, you know, barcoding things, is we don't have an inventory system for managing that. So we have a new person that is doing media and is assisting with textbooks. Ms. Benitez, she was here earlier, but she had to leave. And what she's wanting to do is for us to be able to manage our textbooks, our devices, all of the things that students would normally use. Because while we used to only worry about consumables as far as workbooks and textbooks, now that we're in this new age, we're having to worry about devices. So it's just a way for us to be able to keep track of all of the devices that may be issued to a student. And also embed that with the textbooks, library books. It would be like, everything would live on one system instead of having a barcode here and another system here and another system here. Because right now, what the librarians have to do, they were tasked with that duty, is they're accessing three or four different systems to keep track of the inventory. So this is just so that we can keep track of our investment. And I think the investments to the tune of a couple of million dollars as far as those laptops are concerned.
Yes, ma'am. And so what are we doing with inventory loss?
I know that we have already determined that every year there will be a plan in place through Ms. Gina Gonzalez. There are some laptops that, you know, for whatever reason, the parent might have damaged them. We're asking parents to pay for, you know, having to fix things. But we also recognize that there are parents that may not have the means. So if things are under warranty, we're sending those back and getting those fixed. But inevitably, you know, these computers may become consumables, not all of them, because parents may not have the means to replace those devices. So.
And so what is our plan? Because there's a lot of our parents that won't be able to replace these. And these are things that we're giving to children. So that's obvious. So what is our long-term plan?
Well, that's not this item, but I can have Ms. Gina Gonzalez explain that to you.
Please. I'm so about having her explain that to me.
But the item is just to, is just the resource manager. So let's skip, let's stick to that.
Just a quick question, Mr. President, if I may.
Sure.
The previous systems that we have are non-functional. We're not going to be using them anymore. We're not going to be expending costs on that. And then we're getting this new system that should be replacing that in order to track the merchandise, correct?
Right. Because we don't really have a system in place. We kind of got the laptops and used the same system that we were using to check out books. And that is very limited. So we're saying that everything would live in one software in one area. So you're checking out a textbook for STC. You need a laptop for STC. You need an iPad. All the devices and all of the textbooks and consumables would live in one system. That's what this item is.
Thank you.
Okay. General discussion on item 19. Let's consider and take possible action on district instructional technology coaches stipends for the 2021, 2022 school year pending availability of funds.
Good afternoon, board presidents, Mr. Eddie Ramirez, board members.
Can't hear you. Sorry, can't hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Eddie Ramirez, more members of the board, superintendent of schools, Mr. Adolfo Peña, and community members. For this item, we are clarifying that it is for the 2020, 2021, not as it's stated there for the next school year. And this is for instructional technology coaches that we we have in every campus. We have one. It is, they were assigned by the campus principals. And they were the ones who helped us out to have all these staff development that we had throughout the year. I know if you remember what I mentioned, we had over 200 hours of professional development for our teachers. And these these instructional coaches were the ones who provided these trainees. They also provided the tech support in the campuses and also provided staff development in during during time, during school time as well at their campuses. So we're asking for $1,000 for each of them to, that is, that is going to pay for those extra hours that they had to work to get ready and prepared for all of these trainings.
Understood.
So you think it's well worth it, ma'am?
Yes, it is, definitely. We were able to do so much because of their help. And because they are teachers, they are, they know, they are able to meet with teachers and and identify tools that can help the the teachers integrate those things into their lessons. So it's very different. I know we have a lot of help from our from our technology department and our technicians, but also the fact that these teachers are very well-versed and have a lot of experience in the classroom, they were able to facilitate that learning for for everyone. So I think $1,000 for, it's actually $100 a month that they were getting paid for providing all these services, I think.
Well, I'll just say, in these trying times of COVID, I think, you know, they, you all have done a fantastic job in in doing distance learning. And and I think that people need to be compensated for a job well done.
Thank you so much. And they did a lot more than that what we expected.
Than asked. Agreed. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. General discussion, item 20, consider and take possible action on on-ramps programs for the 2021, 2022 school year for RGCC High School and Gruia High School pending availability of funds.
Good evening, board president, members of the board, Mr. Peña. This is a dual enrollment program that we, this is, we're going in our third year for the on-ramps program. It's a program through UT, University of Texas. It offers a dual enrollment for our students. We have Rio Grande City High School and also Gruia High School are the two schools that participate. At this time, we increased our number of teachers last year to three teachers at Gruia High School and also three teachers at at Grúia High School, and also three teachers at Rio High School. The cost per student here is $99 for all our free and reduced lunch students. And one of the things that we offer, we offer these courses to about 120 students, which the cost comes out to approximately $11,880, which is a lot lower than our kids that are attending STC. One of the things that this program does offer are instructors here at our school, at our schools don't have to be, don't have to have a master's degree. So I think that's really important. They work together in conjunction with a professor from the UT. And we also, aside from awarding the credit, our students have the option to accept or deny the credit once they're done. And if they do accept the credit and they complete the course, that also helps us with our CCMR points at the end of the year for accountability purposes. So we're just asking to continue the OnRamps program for this following school year.
Something we've done for a lot of years, correct? It's something we've done for many years, correct?
Yes. This is, this is a continuation, and it's been a great success for our students. And actually, having them get a credit from the University of Texas is a great, a great thing for our kids. They actually get to take that in their transcript and take it to any university that they go to. And we've had great success.
Thank you, ma'am.
General discussion, item 21. Consider taking possible action or renewal of the Renaissance Accelerated Reader Program Reader Program 2022 school year, pending availability of funds.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and do Renaissance Accelerated Reader, and then the other one that goes along with it. And what these two programs are, they, they go hand in hand. One, of course, is the, those of you that have children know that we have the Accelerated Reader Program. What we are submitting right now, our subscription is good until December, but we have the ability to be able to save $5,000. If we renew a little bit early, they're giving us a discount. So normally, we would pay $35,000. If we renew before the beginning of next school year, we would be able to save those $5,000, and that would be $30,000. And this is the software that the kids use to be able to test out. They read a book, and then they test out through Renaissance software and the Accelerated Reader. Now that the librarians have been, you know, under my direction, Ms. Villarreal, I just want to commend you, because there's so many things that happen in the library. I used to think, what does a librarian do all day? Well, they do a lot. And I think with the whole COVID, I think that that just doubles. So my hats off to Ms. Villarreal for being able to handle this, along with all the other programs she has, because, you know, we've had to kind of, you know, put a handle on the program, but there's so much always happening. And Mr. Peña has, of course, set goals for us, that he wanted to do million, million-word readers from December to now. So we made it happen, and we recognize a really, really, really intuitive group of individuals and board members. I'm proud to say the majority of the individuals that were million-word readers were boys. And that's not something that's very common. We have like maybe three or four girls. So I think the girls need to stop texting and TikToking and all that, and get to the books, because the conversations that we had when we met these young men, and they were elementary kids, and I told Ms. Benítez, I said, I'm so surprised. But the thing is, boys tend to be a little bit, not antisocial, they're more introverted. So I was surprised to see that the majority of the boys that read. We had one child that read Elian, Elian Garza Goes to Magnum. He read three million words. He's a fifth grader or fourth grader? He's a fourth grader, and he read three million words. So to me, you know, I was, you know, very, very impressed with that. And I know Ms. Villarreal would share in the joy of that, knowing that, you know, we're continuing with the work that she started. And I know she was a big advocate for, you know, the AR and the AR and the AR. And it's difficult to do when you're remote and you're not coming to school every day. But I just want to let everybody know that, you know, the program is doing well. Kids are taking it seriously. And one of the things is, it was a problem, but it was a good problem. She called me, Ms. Benítez, and said, Ms., we only bought so many prizes for the million-word reader. And I said, okay, so what's the problem? Well, I have more million reader, million-word readers than I had planned for. I said, well, how much is this going to cost? She said, well, so much. I said, do we have the money in the budget? She goes, I have a little bit, but I'm short. Can you help me? I said, sure. So I called Mr. Peña, I said, sir, instead of this many, we have 21. And he's like, that's a good problem to have, Ms. So all of the kids got a book that she purchased for them, but all of the kids that did the million-word challenge got a Nintendo Switch. And we had to go to every Walmart, from Rio Grande to, I want to say Harlingen, to find those 21, because right now that everyone is remote and in COVID, those are very, in very high demand. But it took us a couple of days, but we were able to secure 21 devices. And to see the look on those kids' faces, it kind of makes all the work and all the effort, you know, worthwhile. So I wanted to share that, you know, with you, and I know we took pictures and so on, but it was just a really, really good moment. And so these two items are to be able to implement that agenda and continue with that. And hopefully, next year, Mr. Peña has challenged for us to have more three-million-word readers. So it's something that we're pushing, and we, we feel that it's important. So these two items go hand in hand.
Absolutely. Ms. Morris, if you ever have a problem, you contact me, and I'll make sure that these kids that are doing this work will receive what they need to.
Thank you. And we were impressed with one of our fifth graders, and I'm a comprehensive teacher, and they had to share a book. And if you all know Jake Margot, he's a friend of mine, and we went to school together. It's his son, and he says, I think everyone should read The Hobbit. And I turned around and I said, he's a fifth grader, that's like a high school book, but...
That is a great accomplishment.
To have the kids discuss, boys, discuss about books, I was like, you know, amazing. And I'm sure you all can appreciate it. But we were, we were surprised that the majority were, were boys, and they're doing excellent. So we hope we can continue that. And again, Ms. Villarreal, thank you for, for doing the work and getting it started for us. So we just picked up where, you know, she left off, so.
General discussion, item 23. Consider taking possible action or request for permission to purchase the Follett Destiny Library Manager for the 2021-2022 school year, pending availability of funds.
Okay, the next two items are the Follett Destiny Library Manager. That's how we manage the library books. And one of the things that we did because of COVID, and you see the item that I just presented, a lot of the books are virtual, but we still do have an inventory of books. So this is the original Library Manager. And it goes with the item that I presented earlier, as far as incorporating the devices. We just, we're going to combine the two suites and have everything live on one software. So this is basically a renewal of what's already in place right now.
Thank you. All right. General discussion, item 25. Consider taking possible action on the request for permission to purchase iStation Reading Program for middle schools for the 2021-2022 school year, pending availability of funds.
Good evening, Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Peña. We're recommending approval for iStation for next school year, 2021-22. iStation is a state-recommended and approved program that we will hopefully be utilizing for, as our universal screener for middle schools, and also for intervention and acceleration. We did have a meeting with all our deans of instruction, our principals, our teachers, and directors. And we had a presentation from a gentleman, a representative from iStation. And we had some discussion afterwards. And it was recommended, we did recommend that we utilize this program for next year. So we're asking for your approval.
Why is this recommended for next year? I'm sorry, I didn't get that clarification.
It's a universal screener for middle schools, and it's also intervention and acceleration as well.
And we've utilized it before?
Yes, we have used istation in the past.
And what if, what exactly has been our benefits? How we, how we measured that?
What was that?
And what exactly has been our benefits for our students? How we measured that?
Basically, the universal screener, it assesses students, beginning, middle, and end of year. Okay, and we do have to submit data to the state, and that is what the screener will be used for.
Got it. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, you're welcome.
So ma'am, we've utilized istation before, haven't we? Have we used this program before?
Yes, sir, we have.
How many years have we used it for?
So before, sir, Tango came along, we had used it for about five years. And we had used it, used it not only in the secondary level, but also in the elementary level.
Did you find it to be very successful?
It, yes, sir. I found it very successful. I know there was a survey done last year, sir, and 85% of the teachers approved istation as the screener compared to...
So 95% of the teachers like...
Eighty-five, eighty-five.
He said eighty-five.
Eighty-five percent of the teachers like the istation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal, who's second by Mr. Castillo. All those who approve item 17 through 25, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 26, consider taking possible action on South Texas College Summer 2021 Do Enrollment.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 26, 27, and 28.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items 26, 27, and 28. Is there a second? Second, Madam Noé Castillo, is there any discussion on any of those items?
Discussion, 26, 27, 28.
Item 26, I have Mrs. Cuero.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Peña. This item is an item that we bring every semester. It is the dual enrollment program that we have with STC. So this is just the dual enrollment program that we're presenting to you for the summer. And in front of you, you do have the estimated cost. That is not actual cost, it's just an estimated cost.
No changes, no modifications?
These are the sections that our counselors are currently enrolling students. We do have registration presently going on. So we have confirmed that these are the sections that we'll be making for the summer.
Good, ma'am.
Just, I have a question on, on the summer school programs. Who could I address that to? The salary you're going to be paying teachers, it was, it used to be $30, and we're increasing it to what, ma'am, could I ask?
Yes, sir. We are recommending that we increase the hourly rate for teachers from $30 to $50. And for the paraprofessionals, bus drivers, bus aides, and teacher aides, and office clerks to $25 an hour. The reason we're doing this is because we're having a difficult time recruiting people to come to work for summer, to come to staff development for summer. We looked around the Valley, and McAllen ISD, PSJA, Sherland, Mission are all paying $45 to $55 an hour, because they're having the same issue. People are tired, and the only way to motivate them to come is to pay them a little bit more. This would be only for the summer school session. Come August, when the tutorials begins, we would go back to the original $30 an hour for professionals and $15 for Paris.
The only thing I worry sometimes is if we establish a ceiling of $50 an hour, you know, it's going to be hard, three or four or five years away, to go back to, onto $30, $35, or $40. I know we have extra money right now, and that, that is not a problem. But as we move forward, are we going to be, be able to keep the ceiling at $50, let's say, four years down the line?
No, sir. The only reason we entertained this amount, again, was because of the need of bringing in teachers, and because we do have extra money coming our way.
Can we just, somewhere in the statement, or when we do that, that they, they say this is a one-time deal, and then next year we'll look at it again?
We can do it on the actual application.
Yeah, because I don't want people thinking that next year, we're going to, let's say, our finances. Maybe we can, but let's say we can't, I don't want to make, I just don't want to get caught up. You paid me $50 last year, how come you can't pay me this year? So maybe in the application, or whatever it is, for them to say, this is a one-time deal, and next year, it could vary, it could go back to $30, it could go even higher or lower. But I just don't want to get caught saying it's $50 from here on in.
I will make that note on the applications with HR.
Just for the sake of organization, this is in reference to, Jen, item number 27, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that comes with this package, which is...
So is payment in item number 27, is payroll, even in this item?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, it's part of the summer school program amendment. And we also added a couple of, if you noticed, on the background information, we highlighted or bolded some of the changes to some of the programs. Initially, last month, we came to board with the summer proposal. But from that time to, to currently, we have major changes and other additions that our superintendent of school and committee recommended. So those are the things that you see in bold, and of course, the hourly rate. Those were the two things.
To answer your question, our hourly rate, I realize we're increasing it due to the current circumstances, but how far are we behind everyone else?
We are exactly about the same, $30, $35 for professionals across the Valley. They do pay their, their admin more. PSJA pays their admin $40. We are not suggesting that on a normal term, but we are suggesting as well that we have some administrators working this summer off of contract, and we're asking that they also receive the $50 an hour for this summer school.
So the $50 would apply, Mr. Peña, district-wide, right? Because I don't want to get caught, well, these people are at $50, and we have other people doing summer programs. When we say $50, it's across the board, correct?
Professionals.
Professionals, and 30, and what, how much? Whatever we're doing here, we have to do across the board for everybody.
And it's extra-duty pay, sir.
Right, but in other words, I know we're talking teachers, but let's say there's other people that have other programs. And let's say, like, you're talking bus drivers driving and cafeteria workers working. I just want to make sure that we include everybody and not only a certain facet.
Yes, the only, the only difference, if you, if you notice, is the cafeteria. And I want to do mention that, because the last page on your, on your handout, if you notice, the cafeteria cooks, Mrs. Ramírez maintained her $20 an hour, and the cafeteria managers at 30. But if you notice, everyone was listed, CNAs, LVNs, everyone there, custodial staff, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, bus aides, security guards, where even...
I just want to make sure that we do it for...
It's across the board.
District-wide.
Yes, sir.
It's not only, okay.
And it's only for the summary.
For example, professionals are $50 an hour, that we do it for everybody that has another program?
Yes, sir, because not only are some going to be teaching, but some are going to be attending staff development during the summer. So this includes all of them.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, did that cover 27 and 28?
28, again, going back, as I've been in federal programs for, I guess, this is my fifth year. We have never increased the tutor pay. The hourly rate for tutors has always been $10. We're suggesting and recommending that we increase it to $15. This is for the regular term moving forward, $15 an hour for those tutors who come in with an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree. Of course, if they've been screened already by HR. And we're also asking that, in the past, we've never paid administrators for working weekends or off-contract, we're suggesting that an administrator get paid the $30 an hour, or if they're working a full six-hour Saturday, for example, that they get the $7.50 rate. And that's the recommendation to the federal grants, policies, and procedures.
Thank you, Ms. González. All right, there's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items 26, 27, 28. It was seconded by Mr. Noé Castillo.
Twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Right before voting, I just want to make sure we clarify.
Sure.
It's been recommended by Board that all professionals are $50, Ms. González. All auxiliary is at 25, is that correct, Mr. Villarreal?
Both. Whatever we do for one, we have to do for everybody. That's all I want to amend.
I just want to make sure that we have it...
The only thing that, that's why I mentioned cafeteria, was because she's on a separate pay rate than I am. She's on a different than we are. So that was her term. We did approach her. Kathy, are you here? No. We did approach her about the 25...
Why don't we talk to the superintendent, give him the option to be able to allow, if, to do it, if it's possible? Though I want to amend the motion to give, to give the authority to the superintendent for the cafeteria workers, if they want to receive the same amount of money, that it's allowable, that we don't get caught today saying they can't, okay? I want to amend that motion, Mr. President.
I would also like to say, Mr. Peña, it is illegal for you to ask a board member about salary raises. It is your, and yours only, your actually, your responsibility. It's called micromanagement if the board members, as we are, suggest salaries. So again, I agree with Mr. Villarreal. It is up to the superintendent and what your recommendation is, and it is our job only to approve.
Yes, ma'am, I was only asking for clarification.
Honestly, well, I don't think boards should clarify what you're responsible for.
There was a motion by Mr. Villarreal for items 26, 27, 28. It was amended motion.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Is there a second, the second, Mr.?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 29, consider taking possible action on new telephone system. There's a motion, any discussion on item 29?
A motion to table item 29, Mr. President.
Okay, there's a motion to table by Mr. Peña, it was seconded by Mr. Pope, actually. Any discussion?
Discussion. Is there a reason?
I would ask that, you know, we, Jay and I, through Pope and Peña, we just got new phone systems. They're very complicated.
Mr. Pope, I apologize, I can't hear you, and I really want to hear your, your recommendation.
We, we actually just received a new phone system, and they're very complicated. We, we actually just received a new phone system, and they're very complicated. They have some downfalls. I mean, these are very lengthy contracts, so I would just recommend that these individuals, if they want to obtain a contract through here, that they provide a, a individual to come and show us the phone systems and show us the, the benefits and the downfalls, and see, see, see that we choose from there. Because I did go through the, I, I mean, I go through all this pamphlet, and I think I only saw two contracts. There was, I think there was, off the top of my head, there was, I think there was five or six providers, and there was only two contracts. And I, I mean, you could read through the contract, but I would like for somebody to come and display it, come and show us how everything works, and then see, see how that works. I mean, if they're willing to take contracts from this district, I don't see how there would be a problem sending one individual to come and display these, these things. So that, that would be my recommendation.
And my, my request is really for our support staff here, if we could, under the requirements for the phone system, get clarification on two things that are really important to me. Number one, I've been hearing a lot about the 9567161600 number. I need clarification on whether or not those are going to transfer from these companies, if they can transfer. And the second one is clarification on the type of support that they offer. My understanding is that there's been a shift in technology with cloud-based VoIP phone systems. And so there's two different proposals here, one, one answers to premise and one to cloud-based. And so I want to know, and I'm thinking that eventually there's going to be discussions about hybrid, hybrid teaching and folks working from home, and if that's the case, whether or not it's possible for some of these folks, or some of our employees, some of our staff, to be able to answer certain lines from home. So what softwares are, what technologies are available? We're aware that there are technologies available. I'd like to know if any of these vendors offer that technology as well.
Mr. Science, is, is, would there be a problem getting them to present to us, I guess, at the next board meeting, if, if we were to table this item?
Uh, no, there is no problem. Unfortunately, I submitted a slim packet to the board. I do have the proposals that Mr. Pope is talking about. We did go out on bid for, because of the recommendation of the board. Four, four out of the five companies that submitted it, uh, let me, let me backtrack. At the, at the, at the middle of March, this board requested that we go out on bid because Ring Central had no educational experience. And I went out, I seeked the major companies, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Mitel, and two independent vendors. And we went over a list of requirements, and I'll just list a few. Of course, IP voice system, for sure, 700 phones that we needed for the district, 10 100, 1,000 connections, which are gigabit connections, at least three-inch screens on them. I have a whole list of requirements that I sent these companies, that you all have a copy of. I did give them the option of a premise, which means in-house, and a cloud-based solution. One company did offer a hybrid solution, which is a premise solution, that if the premise solution goes down, the cloud-based takes over. I thought that was an excellent product.
Which company was that, Mr. Science?
Frontier Communications.
Frontier, so they are offering both, premise and-
Yes, they're, they're offering both. That was actually going to be my recommendation. Because of the pricing, we were going to have both a hybrid solution. I've been doing this all my life. I know what an educational entity requires as far as a phone system. Ever since I took over technology supervisor, I've been in charge of the phone system. I know what a monster it is. I'm very familiar with it, but if the board wants to wait on it, that is your decision. I will abide by, by your clarification on these items, if that's what you all want, that's what we'll do.
Mr. Science, just on those three things, if I could ask, you've been doing a great job, but just if the transferability of the numbers, a description on the support that they're offering, that'd be the second thing. And the third one is whether or not they offer that ability for folks to answer their extensions from home.
And, and they all, they offer that, 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 again, I don't know how you want me to present this at the next board meeting, if you want all five companies on Zoom, or how you plan to do this. I need clarification on this.
We could invite them if we could. This one's a big decision, because, I mean, we're going to be stuck with this system for a while. Now's the time to change it, if we're going to change it. I mean, this one's, this one's big, I, I would invite them over if, if we could.
As long as you're here, even if it's a bedroom, I think that, that would be fair enough.
So you want them at the next board meeting, or?
If we could invite them to, to present, that would be, I think-
I can tell you it's going to be lengthy.
Okay.
Okay, no problem.
That's our job, sir. That's what we're here for.
Okay, that's what we'll do it for the next board meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your work, Mr. President.
There's a motion to table by Mr. Peña, it was seconded by Mr. Pope. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 30, consider to take possible action on contract training agreement between South Texas College, STC, and RGCC ISD. After-school centers on education ACE grant for 2021 middle school summer camp for the three. Grant middle schools, IT and robotics STEM summer enrichment classes.
Mr. President, I think these are all connected. I move that we approve item 30, 31, 32, and 33.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items 30, 31, 32, and 33. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
A second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion on any of these items?
Discussion, 30, 31, 32, and 33.
Start off with item 30, Ms. Villarreal.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, board members, Mr. Peña, and Starconians. The item that I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to point out that there is a mistake in this board numeration. I think it's been put in twice, okay, so I just wanted to clarify that. I don't know if that was like a typing error, or, or what. On item 30 and 33, it's like the same thing, so I just wanted to, to make a point of that. On item number 30, the ACE program, this is technically, last year was going to be our last year, but because we're doing so good in the ACE grant, they granted me one more year. Now, the ACE grant in summer, it's totally enrichment. And the middle schools are Veterans Middle School, Gruya Middle School, and Ringo Middle School, and Gruya High School. So I know that Mr. Peña and the board members wanted to enforce that the students come in person with the teachers in person. And I know that our educational status because of COVID, a lot of our students might be failing, and a lot are going to be referred to summer school, which is very imperative for the educational restoration right now. So I didn't want to be Mrs. Gina Gonzalez's competition, because academics does come first. So we were brainstorming here, and I cleared up with, with my consultants, with TA, because I do have people that check on me like every month. And we decided, because that was written in, that we were going to do these summer camps, enrichment camps, with South Texas College at South Texas Campus here in Real Grande City. Now, if you see here, it says here, we, we spoke to the professors, and of course, Dr. Montiel. And back then, it was Dr. Shirley Reeve, and now they have a new board president, not board president, but president of the, of the college, Mr. Dr. Plummer. And the, the professors are willing to come to the Real Grande City campus, and we want to follow what Mr. Peña's initiative is. So they said that they would accept between eight to 10 students in the summer classes at STC. So what the ACE grant will do, with your permission, we're going to subcontract through STC, and we're going to offer the following classes. I think it's there in your, in your packet. But I'm going to go ahead and mention them. The first one is the Fanuc Robotics. We also have Digital Forensics. And then we have, from June the 7th through the 10th, another session of Fanuc Robotics. We have Cyber Camp Basics, Intro to Python, then Cyber Camp Advanced, and then we have two more of Fanuc Robotics. Now, my summer school for the ACE program doesn't run three weeks, it runs six weeks, Monday through Thursday. And that's in compliance with my grant. So I'm asking permission to subcontract from STC for these camps. Now, our role would be to, of course, recruit the students, and they're only allowing eight to 10 per class. The site coordinator will get on the bus and make sure that they go to the correct class at the campus level and the college level. And like I said, I don't want to compete with the educational tutoring that's going to be going on, or remediation. So my classes are going to be from 12 o'clock lunch to 5 o'clock in the evening. So we're, I am respectfully asking permission to subcontract with STC for the ACE grant.
Any further discussion on item 30? General discussion on 31, consider to take possible action on after-school centers on education ACE grant for 2021 summer clinical medical assisting classes for Gruya High School students through RGV vocational services.
The high school grant that's in, listed in the ACE is Gruya High School because of its demographics. And we're doing a wonderful job. We have an excellent principal, and of course, Mr. Peña was the principal here. And based on the summer program, this will be an ACE grant site. We are with Tronora that just presented, we're going to have dual enrollment welding, dual enrollment information technology, and we're pending dual enrollment HVAC based on the recruitment status of this school. The dean would not allow us to advertise until we have 15 recruitments, and we're working on that as we speak right now. But for the ACE grant this summer at Gruya High, we are, we're, I am respectfully asking if we could subcontract to offer, it was known before as CNA, but now with the industry-based certifications, they changed it again. And now it's clinical medical assistant classes through RGV vocational services for the summer class for the Gruya High School students. And this would help for the industry-based certifications for the CCMR points.
Any further discussion on item 31? Okay, general discussion, item 32, consider to take possible action on after-school centers on education ACE grant for 2021 summer drone pilot classes for Gruya High students through RGV vocational services.
The same vendor that, that has preposition to teach the classes for the clinical medical assistant classes for Gruya High also has a drone class for the enrichment classes for Gruya High School through the ACE grant. And I respectfully asking permission if we could subcontract to offer that at Gruya High School. And the hours would also be the same, not to compete with the educational endeavors that are going to go on with, through Mrs. Gina Gonzalez's summer program. They would also be from 12 to 5 o'clock in the evening, Monday through Thursday.
So this is a drone pilot class?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, wow.
And I don't know if you've got to read the contract, it's included in there, and if the students do very good, they're each going to get their drone.
Oh, wow.
And then if we do really, really good, that's in the industry-based certification, the drone pilot. If we do really good, I don't know of the principals here, we want to do it in the fall, so that would be another class.
Wow. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, you're here. Okay, all right. And I think that number 33, board members, is a repetition of item 30, it's just been reworded, okay?
Okay. So, Mr. President, I move that we approve item 30, 31, and 32. Let me amend my motion, because 33 is the same as 30, so I'm going to amend my motion to approve item 30, 31, and 32, and exclude 33 because it's the same as 30.
All right, there's an amended motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to the amended motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. There is no action needed on item 33. Seems like a redundant to item 30. Item 34, consider to take possible action on request for permission to purchase welcome bilingual supply backpacks for incoming English learners PK 3 through PK 4.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 34 and 35 presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion?
34 and 35.
Mr. Martinez, will you, general discussion on item, item 34?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent of Schools. Item 34, we're right now in the process of doing online registration. Now, for pre-K 3 and pre-K 4, the state has guidelines for them to income, to income, or to come into school. And most of the kids qualify through language, which is the home language survey that the parents have to complete. And so because most of the kids qualify through language, we want to basically be ready for the first day of school and have a backpack for these students, so that the teachers can be ready, and this backpack could be taken home as well. And if you look at it, it has very nice items that will be included in that backpack. Besides the fact that it has two word books, one in English and one in Spanish, one is, and these four books are specifically for pre-K 3 and pre-K 4. The one in Spanish is Juguemos a las letras, where they basically learn the alphabet in Spanish. And then they have the Kitty and Puppy Preschool Activity Book, which is in English. And in addition to that, they do get the letters, uppercase letters in English and Spanish. They also get the alphabet arc, which they can practice these letters as well. They do get scissors, they could, they get glue sticks, pencils, crayons, and the basic, most important items that they need for pre-K 3 and pre-K 4. So it's, it's, we're asking for 500 backpacks, and the total cost is $23,161. And I do have funding through Title III, which is federal, and it requires that we provide supplemental for our students, supplemental activities.
Any discussion, further discussion on item 34? All right, general discussion, item 35, it's a consider to take possible action on College First ESL Academic Enrichment 2021 Summer School Camps.
Item 35, sir, we've been bringing College First, which is a company that provides basically STEM in mathematics, science, and E-LAR English. And this company, once again, through Title III, I do have to provide supplemental enrichment activities. And I know that during the year, we have tutorials, so I usually wait for the summer for those kids that, you know, need the extra advancement, or they are going into the career fields such as mathematics or science. And so what this company does for this specific year, because of COVID, we're targeting for the three middle schools. It would be at the gymnasiums. We're looking at 25 students per campus. Obviously, with the COVID recommendations and having them six feet apart, and the company will be providing the materials for each student, and each student will be creating those enrichment activities, which are geared towards mathematics, science, and, and college. And the total cost for that, for the three camps, for the three middle schools, it would be a one day, which is June 15, from 8:30 in the morning to 11:30, and it's $11,400, and I do have funding through Title III.
Excuse me, sir, and the number of 25 per campus, how did we come up with that?
At, at this point, Dr. B, we had to go with an estimate, because we don't know exactly how many students, especially at the middle school, are going to show up for summer. But we're expecting that, based on teacher recommendation, especially those, those students that are staying behind, you know, due to the situation that we're experiencing, that we're going to have at least 25 students. So I had to, in order for me to get a proposal, I had to give a minimum number, and so the minimum was 25 students per campus.
And we don't expect it to be more than 25 students per campus?
That, that is correct, but once again, because it's going to be face-to-face and the situation, we would have to limit to 25. And we will go, if we have more than 25, obviously, they have to be ESL students, and we would go on teacher and principal recommendation.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal, it was seconded by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 36, consider to take possible action on request for English language training by Jane Schaefer for high school E-LAR teachers under the ESL program for the 2021, 2022 school year pending availability of funds.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 36 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second? Second by Menoy Castillo. Is there any discussion?
Discussion requested.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes, sir. Since the past few years, we've been working with Jane Schaefer. We started here at Gruya High School with Mr. Peña, when he was principal here. Keep in mind that we have been applying for an ESL waiver to TA due to the fact that some of our English teachers are not ESL certified. And we have to spend 10% of the state bilingual allotment in providing staff development for these teachers. Obviously, one of the areas where we struggle the most is writing, and so that's why we started that initiative here at Gruya High School. And now we're expanding it to the other high schools, as well as middle schools and elementary. But this particular is for a two-day training when the teachers get back next school year, which is August the 9th and the 10th. And obviously, spending availability of funds, you know, for next year. The total cost is $10,448, but once again, this is compliance through the TA waiver. In order for us to comply, we do need to have this staff development, and writing is one of the areas where we have the most need.
So, excuse me, sir, I recognize that this has been an issue for us. Have we seen improvements in this area concerning the changes that we've, that we've made?
Yes, we have, Dr. B. Unfortunately, you know, last year, because of COVID, you know, testing has not been the way it, it needs to be. But nonetheless, we have seen, by looking at the data, you know, and the programs that we're using, especially at the high schools, that this is improving. I mean, the students are scoring better when we have benchmarks and- I mean, the students are scoring better when we have benchmarks and we have, you know, assessments from the state, not the official ones, but we have some that the state allows for us to more or less know how the students are doing. And they have been showing tremendous gains on the writing. What Jane Schaefer does is basically teach writing through literature. And as we move on forward, the state testing for E-LAR now is going to be reading and writing combined. So our teachers need to know how to, not only how to teach reading, but at the same time, as they're teaching reading, the students need to be able to do the analysis through writing. And so what Jane Schaefer does is use a color pen system where the teachers eventually get trained, and then they turn it around to the students. They must have the color pens with them in order for this to be successful. And as they're reading the books, and then they're writing about them, they're using the color pens to analyze main idea on one particular color, supporting details in another particular color, and making sure that they have the steps they need to have to be successful with their writing essays. And not only are we showing improvement here, but also in the districts that Jane Schaefer has been, you know, providing staff development, there has been tremendous gains. And I've been following on that, and I can tell you that it is a successful program. As a former writing teacher, I do recommend Jane Schaefer.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? By Mr. Castillo, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 37, consider take possible action on request for permission to standardize Rio High School and Gruia High School logos and colors for all sports.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 37 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second on item 37? Second by Mr. Castillo. Mr. Martinez, go ahead and discuss item 37.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Again, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Back in March, we did come before you to ask permission to standardize both logos for both high schools. As you can see, thank you, Mr. Varela, for helping me pass out those handouts. I did provide some colored copies since I did realize later this evening or afternoon that the copies in your packet were not in color. So again, also on your screen, you were able to see the recommendations that were presented here for you. On that first copy there on the screen, we have the original logo that was a board approved about 2004, I believe, 2005. Mr. Peña and I had a discussion about this, and he does like that logo. We would like to keep it if possible, but allow athletics to use the other logos represented, the gator head with a G H S, gator head by itself, and of course, the G for our helmets and caps. Okay? I've also provided the blue copy and the white copy background, just so you can have an idea what it'll look like. There on the screen, now, there you go. We have a white background, just to give you an idea what it'll look, the logos will look behind, of course, a blue background and a white background. Those are the school-approved colors, the royal blue and the white. So, and of course, we did add some border, also some different colors, the black, the gray, and the red, just as an option. We're still tweaking and of course, trying to modify those, you know, lines. But again, just to give you an idea of what those logos would look like with different backgrounds and different outlines, okay? Any question on the gator logo? I did poll my coaches, and out of the 16 head coaches here at the high school, or, I'm sorry, 13 head coaches, 100% selected the first slide, the gator with the open mouth, as opposed to the second slide, the mean-looking gator. So that was really what the coaches decided on, and it was unanimous, they did select that gator, as opposed to the, I don't know if you can show on the slide up there, so Dr. B can see that other logo.
So they liked the friendly gator, not the mean gator, right?
That is correct, yes. They liked the gator with open mouth as opposed to the one with a mean face.
So the top one, right? The very, very top one?
No, all of them.
No, no, no.
There should be another slide that shows a different-looking gator.
I'm sorry, I don't, did I see that one?
This is the mean one. I see.
I like all of them.
There you go, right there.
I don't know which one.
That was the second option the coaches selected from. So again, 100% selected the first option, which is the first one that I showed you, the gator with the open mouth.
I'm with whatever the coaches want. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Any question on that? Moving on to the Rio High School, of course, logo, we have the original, if you can put that up on the screen, please, Mr. Lopez. There, on your screen, you'll see the original logo. Of course, it's that R with the rattler wrapped around it that was approved back in 2005, I believe, 2006. Again, we'd like to keep that logo as an option, but for athletic purposes, for our caps, for polo shirts, embroidery, it's a lot simpler to use the RGC rattler. And of course, the other option would be to select an R. Lately, our coaches have been, can you pull up the second screen with the, there you go. We need to select an R to kind of standardize the logo that we use on caps, or our helmet for that matter. And based on polling our coaches, 50% selected the first one, the block R, that kind of resembles the RGC logo with a rattler. 25% selected the option number three, the sporty-looking R, there in the middle. And another 25% selected option five. Option five, option one, pretty much resemble the same thing, except option one's a little bit slimmer. I mean, I'm sorry, option three, I'm sorry, option five is a little bit slimmer, option one's a little bit wider, but pretty much the same-looking logo. Option three, of course, a little bit different, a little bit more sporty-looking. But again, those were the options that were given to our coaches to vote on, and those were your top three vote-getters. On the next slide, Mr. Lopez, if you can pull up the next slide, you'll see the same logos with a white background, again, same thing, give you different options there. Also, we added the different outlines, the white, the gray, and the blue, the royal blue. Back when we were one high school, royal blue was the color that we used to use for our sister school, Gruia. So again, that's also an option. We have not voted on the outline, but, you know, I would like to get maybe your input or recommendation as far as what you would like for us to consider, as far as an outline or a third color for our logos.
Any further discussion on item 37?
The only thing I was going to say, Mr. Ramirez, whatever the coaches say is great. The only thing, let's see if we can standardize, because sometimes we have deviations from colors to, rattlers are red and white, right? Have always been red and white.
Correct.
Forever and a day. But all of a sudden, you see all kinds of colors on there. And all I'm saying, whether it's an R, or whatever R it is, because you go to other schools and you recognize, and let's say Sherlin, you recognize your S and you know what it is. And hopefully, we can stay with the G for Gruia and the R for rattlers and keep it that way, so when people see it, those are the rattlers, or those are the gators, basically. As opposed to changing it up and down and whatever the coaches, if those are what they agree on, that's fine, you know, but not changing it up because it seems that every couple of years, we come up with different patterns and different Rs and different colors, basically.
Yes, sir, I agree with you 100%. And that is the purpose of coming before you as board members, to give us some guidance and of course, to make these the official school-approved or district-approved logos. That way, we're not going to deviate. We have coaches coming in and out, and football especially, and, you know, sometimes they come with their own ideas, but no more, they're going to abide by whatever district logos have been approved at this time.
Mr. Ramirez, can I make a recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that, again, I agree with Mr. Varela, whatever the coaches want obviously should be the predominant deciding factor, but I agree, I think a lot of people have different interpretations of what they want. Can we do standardize a traditional logo, a sporty logo, an innovative, so that even if it's three types, it's still standardized, but coaches get to determine if they want to be traditional, sporty, or whatever other category we say that way, that we do give them some leeway in decisions, but we do have some standardization? Does that make sense?
Yes, Dr. B, that is my recommendation, that we keep the original logo that we approved 15 years ago, and also give us permission to use the more sporty-looking gator with, of course, that one letter also, the G for the gators, which they already have, and which need to, of course, decide on which letter for the rattlers. But I think that the majority has already decided, it'll be the option one.
Mr. Ramirez.
So we're only going to have one option?
For the letter, yes, ma'am. It'll be, yes. Every school will have the option to use the original logo.
Oh, okay.
The, of course, the gator or the rattler with the RGC or GHS, and of course, one letter. For the rattlers, in this case, would be option one, that was the majority vote getter. And of course, the gators already have their G, so no problem there.
Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Peña just gave me an interesting thing. Isn't it possible, let's call it the student option? And what I'm saying is, whether it's a letter, maybe the letter giving the students the student option, and see what they vote on and see what they want. Keep these, obviously, but maybe the students say, hey, we really want this other one, and give, I call it the student option, not only the coaches' option, but the student option, and see what they come up with. Approve these, but then maybe come back with a student option and see what they say.
Okay, I'll coordinate with Ms. Juanita, maybe we can send something out on a Google sheet.
Just like Google and see which, which letter they vote on, or basically, in other words, which, what they like, and maybe call it the student option, and maybe give them a student option, maybe, maybe. I don't know. But let's approve these right now.
Right.
I like that. That makes sense.
We'll do that.
Great idea.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any more questions?
And work, I believe in approving like what we said right now, and then going back and getting a student option from Gruia and rattlers and see what they come up with.
Yes, sir.
And one option. Don't give them five or six, just one.
Amending the motion.
We'll do, thank you.
So I'm amending the motion to allow a student option.
All right, there's an amended motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. I can't see Dr. B anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Same sign, I would presume. All right, motion passes. Item 38, consider take possible action on agreement between Curative Incorporated and Rio Grande City CISD for kiosk COVID-19 testing for students, staff, and community.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 38 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Noe Castillo. Mr. Barrera, go ahead and give us some discussion on item 38, please.
Hello, yes, so once again, we want to try to offer easy accessibility for anybody that would like a COVID test. We've had them in the past, for example, in the Basilio Park or in the Roma Community Center. They're a little bit less in our community nowadays, and we would like to have one, you know, a school-based one. So if school's happening, you know, we always have that option for anybody that has COVID symptoms or would like to get tested. Once again, it is to help our staff, students, and community easier access to COVID testing. It is free. If you have insurance, of course, they have free insurance, and they will bill the insurance. If you don't, it is free. All they require is for us to provide a location. We're looking at Fort Ringel. We would assess Fort Ringel with, for example, our police department, just to make sure it'll be at an area with not as much traffic or easier to control. But we are hoping to approve this agreement to have easier access for anybody that would choose to do it. And of course, people still have the option to go to their doctors if they choose to do that route. These PCR tests have been, I believe the turnaround time sometimes is about 24 hours is a day. We have had cases where, you know, sometimes it takes up to five days, six days. So with this company, I believe it's about 24 hours nowadays, and we hope to continue this agreement with them if possible.
Any further discussion on item 38? There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? By Mr. Castillo, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. It is now 10:13, and the board will now convene an executive or closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 through 551.076 and 551.082 through 551.084. We are back, and actually, now it's 11:06, we're reconvening an open session. Item A requires, it was just information only, does not require any action. Do I have a motion on item B?
I move that we approve item B as discussed in closed session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Noe Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed.
Excuse me, I can't hear, I can't hear anything. I can't hear. So can someone please adjust the audio, because I can't vote until I can make sure I can hear the meeting.
All right.
Thank you, guys, but I can't hear anything. Just like I couldn't hear anything in the executive, so please put that on the formal record. And then I also reported that to the president, who said, I can't do anything about it, even though I'm a board member who is required to participate in all meetings, as I have tried. But I didn't hear anything in the executive, so I cannot formally say I can vote on anything. And I would also like to say, when I addressed the president, he said, I can't do anything about it.
That's not what I said, okay. There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? By Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, so signify by raising your left. Any abstentions? All right, six in favor, and no vote on the other. Motion passes. Is there a motion on item C?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item C as recommended in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela on item C, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, so signify by raising your left. Any abstentions? Six in favor, motion passes. Do I have a motion on item D?
I move that we approve item D as presented in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pope. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All in favor, all those opposed.
For the record, I abstain, Mr. President.
Two abstentions. All in favor, two abstentions, motion passes. Do I have a motion on item E?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item E as presented.
I can't hear you. Does anybody care?
I'm not. We approve item E as presented in executive session.
I can't hear, I can't hear, I can't hear.
Can you check on it again?
I haven't heard since we resumed the session. I couldn't hear an executive.
You can hear over there? Apparently, she can't.
Hello.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, there's a, there's a motion by Mr. Varela on item E, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Pope, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, so signify by raising your left. Okay, six in favor, motion passes. Is there a motion on item F?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item F as discussed in an executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, so signify by raising your left. Six votes in favor, motion passes. Do I have a motion on item G?
Mr. President, I move that we table item G, yes.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, so signify by raising your left. Six votes in favor, motion passes, do I have a motion for adjournment? So vote.
I can't hear.
Second by Castillo.
On formal record, board member, can't hear, can't vote. Just want to make sure that's on the record. Thank you, gentlemen.